Okay, if everybody will have their seat, please. We're going to call our meeting to order. Good evening. We're going to have a roll call by our city clerk, Kathy Valdez.
The records show a flag that all members are present.
Okay, we're going to have the next thing, we have a pledge of allegiance, if you'll rise, and it's going to be led by tonight by Fran Jensen with the Vista Women's Club, and she's going to also do the invocation following the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Keep us, oh God, from pettiness. Let us be large in thought, in word, in deed. Let us be done with fault-finding and leave off self-seeking. May we put away all pretense and meet each other face-to-face without self-pity and without prejudice. May we never be hasty in judgment and always generous. Let us take time for all things and to grow calm, serene, gentle. Teach us to put into action our better impulses, straightforward and unafraid. Grant that we may realize that it is the little things that create differences, that in the big things of life, we are at one. And may we strive to touch and to know the great, common, human heart of us all. And, oh Lord God, let us not forget to be kind.
Thank you. Thank you. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. And the next thing is the approval of our agenda by our city manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes this evening.
And our attorney, Jonathan Stone, will bring us out of our closed session.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There was a closed session, a consultation with the Sheriff's Department pursuant to Government Code 54957, and there is no action to report.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda are presentations, and I have a huge favor to ask of my council. This was not agendaized, it's on human trafficking, and I attended the human trafficking, the Seroptimists had a human trafficking event on Saturday, and so I couldn't get this on the agenda, but because January is human trafficking month, I wanted to do it in January, and our next meeting isn't until February. So if you wouldn't mind if I would present that, I see Kay Van Nevel in the audience, and she's with the Seroptimists, I'd like to just, is that okay? Is everybody okay? Yes, yes, okay, I see shaking hands, heads, okay. Okay, I'd like to read the proclamation, and then maybe Kay would say that, because human trafficking is such a huge issue in this area, so I just thought this was important. Whereas January is recognized as National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month, Seroptimists International of Vista and North San Diego County Human Trafficking Collaborative are holding their 11th Annual Human Trafficking Awareness Event and Walk to raise awareness, connect victims to services, and combat human labor and sex trafficking. Eight hundred thousand people are trafficked across international borders annually, with 17,000 victims trafficked across the United States border every year. Most identified victims are in California. Recruitment for juvenile sex trafficking occurs in malls, online, on mass transit, and even in middle and high school campuses throughout San Diego County, with an average age of 16 years old. Cities throughout San Diego County are launching a campaign to combat juvenile sex trafficking with individuals wearing blue ribbons to raise awareness and to show solidarity with victims of human trafficking. So now therefore the mayors and members of our Vista City Council do hereby thank the Seroptimists International of Vista and North San Diego County Human Trafficking Collaborative for their efforts in bringing human trafficking awareness, and hereby proclaim January 2017 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in the city of Vista. So I'd like to congratulate you on getting the information out there, and if you'd like to say a couple of words, you can do that. Are you going to take a picture? Wait, we're going to do a little picture here. Okay. Thank you, Terry. Okay, just feel free to say a couple of words.
Okay, thank you very much. On behalf of the members of Seroptimists International of Vista and North County Inland, I thank you for this. I thank the city of Vista, not only for these words, but for the support that we've had from them for the 11 years that our club has been involved in fighting horrendous crimes of human trafficking. These crimes probably will never go away, but we can't carry that notion and not do anything. I would like to let you know that there are really some positive things that have happened in the last probably 15 or so years. We now have law enforcement well-trained in recognizing the difference between a victim and a criminal when a young girl is brought in and appears to be a prostitute. We also have services that are wraparound services, improving medical, dental, psychological, and specific training, because these poor young women, mostly women, have been so traumatized that it takes years. It takes, in fact, 11 attempts to leave, as they call it, "the life." So we have an ongoing battle. I hope that some of you here in this audience, if you are interested, would take a look at our website, seroptimistvista.org, and consider joining the fight. Once again, thank you to the city of Vista, and thank all of you for coming.
Thank you. We have one more presentation. That's Matthew Sanford, Director of Economic Development, San Diego Regional Economic Development Corporation, and he's going to provide an update on our Innovate 78.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening. Good evening, council members. Thank you for having me here this evening. I think that this is certainly not quite as important of a topic as what we just heard, but all the same, we want to make sure that we're doing a good job in this area that we have some control over. So just a brief reminder of what Innovate 78 is. So in part, it's an economic development effort, providing direct corporate support to companies in issues around business expansion, attraction, and retention. The bulk of our focus is on that expansion and retention, although we are more than eager to work with a company that is interested in coming to North County to make sure that all the resources are there for them to have a smooth transition here, and also make North County known to that company as a great place to do business. The other half of this effort is around branding. Again, it is positioning the 78 corridor in North County San Diego as a place to do business, separate from just a part of San Diego County, but it's something really special going on here. And finally, engagement, making sure that throughout the corridor, whether it's elected officials, city staff, private business owners, or our fantastic academic institutions up here, that we are all on the same page, working together to ensure that we are building the right ecosystem for business. Going into that first part on economic development, so listed here are just a few example projects that we've done over the past six months or so. You can see that they range, well, maybe not by project name, but the companies listed there range very much in industry and in size of business, everywhere from something where there would be an economic impact of three direct jobs, all the way up to 500-plus jobs. Project Spine is in the life sciences industry. Project Membrane and WaterTech are both blue tech companies, and actually, both of those companies have our attraction projects that have expressed interest in the former GE site here in Vista, and so we're trying to make an alignment there if we can. Some other Vista-specific projects, we actually helped Solotube yesterday file for a Calcompetes tax credit, and so we're hopeful for that. We'll know the outcome of that in about three weeks to a month. And we're also working with CalEd, which is an economic development association in the state of California. Their annual conference is going to be in San Diego in March. Mayor Ritter will be on a panel there, talking about the North County collaboration here, and really setting the Innovate 78 initiative as a standard for how economic development collaboration should work and could work throughout the rest of the state. So we're very happy to see that. But just digging into one example here, so VAVI, with a direct impact of only three jobs, is actually much more important than just those three jobs, and it's why we wanted to show you a little bit of a case study of how, as a regional economic development organization, this might work as a timeline. So VAVI first reached out to us through their CEO, that's actually him pictured there, his name's Steve Stoloff, in August of 2016, expressing interest in expanding their visibility and their presence beyond just central San Diego area. They run adult sports leagues and events like the Mud Run and Ridiculous Obstacle Course, et cetera. They are interested in activating some of the fields up here for adult leagues. We all know the importance of, you know, having our kids in sports. We want to make sure that that activity level continues into adulthood, and so finding a balance there where there are vacant fields, making sure that we're able to activate that in a very positive way. So to that point, while VAVI would only hire three or so people, potentially with the presence up here, they would also be impacting a lot of current employees and current residents who are able to join a softball team or a bowling league, et cetera, and really start making a new network here in North County. So again, just wanted to show a bit of a case study of how we interact with companies. Every company that we interact with is certainly different, but this has been a great example of something that is on the right track coming out of the last six months. I feel that we've actually done a very good job in our branding effort. We have reached more than 52 million people with the Innovate 78 brand in the last six months. Those are, as reported by the publications, where we've had placements, which have included things like the LA Times, the Union Tribune, et cetera. Our goal is to double our online followers, if you will, whether that's people who are retweeting and seeing that on Twitter or LinkedIn or Facebook, or receiving our newsletter, et cetera, making sure that that brand is continuing to grow, you know, both inorganically and organically, so that we're spreading the Innovate 78 brand beyond just here in North County. Some initiatives that we have coming up, this is where we talk about engagement, or you can see the past six months, and then the two on the right that are in bold are things that we have upcoming. So we will actually be in Silicon Valley along with San Diego Venture Group next week. They are hosting a recruiting event called Tacos in Tech in the heart of the Bay Area to show that, hey, there's opportunity in San Diego County, and if you're tired of the Bay Area, you know, come here and see what opportunities exist. There's 35 or so companies going. The great thing, they were targeting wanting 400 to 500, you know, software engineers, coders, et cetera. There's already 1,000 registered, so it shows that there's really some interest there. Innovate 78 is working with San Diego Venture Group to show that, again, beyond just San Diego, there's a lot more to San Diego County, especially up here, up north, and so we'll be supporting them in that effort. We will have a booth presence there to really show people and talk about, outside of work, there's still a lot to do, there's great communities, et cetera. And finally, we have also coming up a series of roundtables beginning on March 1st, with a roundtable on tech infrastructure here along the 78 corridor. We'll also move into topics around economic development, around resiliency, and around transit, looking at how we, as five cities, can work together to not only support companies that are developing these technologies, but also potentially, if it makes sense, implementing them along the corridor to make sure that we are, again, creating that ecosystem that is right for businesses as we move into the future. So we're very excited about that. As you can see, we have a great list of collaborators from Palomar College to Miracosta, Cal State San Marcos to UC San Diego, and Clean Tech San Diego, who is really the driving force behind smart technologies region-wide, partnered with us on that. And finally, I wanted to introduce Shay Benton from our team. Shay's a new face, I think, to some of you. He's been with EDC for quite a while. We are increasing how we work with companies up here, so a lot of the day-to-day project work Shay's going to be filling in. He has a lot of experience, both with clean tech and smart technologies, as well as manufacturing, two very important industries here along the 78 corridor, so we're excited to be bringing him up here as well. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Councilmember Franklin, do you have?
Oh, no, I don't have any questions.
Oh, no, no, okay, okay.
Thank you.
Any other, no question? No questions, so you did a great job. Thank you, Matt. Okay, with that, then we're moving along to our consent calendar. The recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the Clerk's Secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the calendar. So the items C1 through C7 are on the consent calendar, so I need to know if anybody, any motion, or somebody wants to remove them.
Madam Mayor, I would like to pull C7.
Okay, C7, and Councilmember Franklin, are you still on there? Is that old?
I want to speak.
Oh, okay, and then Councilmember Aguilera, did you have something?
I was just going to make a motion for the balance of the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously, and we're going to go on from now to item C7, which is the city legislative platform. And Councilmember, do you want a report, or?
Ma'am, no, ma'am, I don't think we need a report on the legislative platform. I first wanted to say thank you to staff and to my colleagues for the changes that we did make regarding the housing and the water. I think it's very important, as Vista's, that we not only have a reaction to what Sacramento was doing, but that we advocate on behalf of the people of Vista. So I appreciate that we added that to the housing element, and also for the water management. But since we talked about this last week, something else has come up regarding the legislative platform, and I think that we need to address it here, and that would be about taxes, increase in taxes that Sacramento was trying to implement. And recently, with the discussion on AB1 and SB1, which are multiple taxes for transportation infrastructure statewide, but they are multiple taxes increased, and that's a discussion that we should have as a full council. So I appreciate that the legislative platform that we pass every year is a guideline for staff, that when something is coming at us from Sacramento, that staff has an idea of what the council's wishes are, and what we would want to support, or oppose, or advocate for. And I don't see taxes in here, and I think it's something that we obviously need to have in here, as to whether or not we would support an increase in taxes on a blanket level, or oppose them on a blanket level, or have them come back to us for a discussion. And so I wanted to put out there that I would like to add a topic in here on taxes, because any one of these can come back to us and say, hey, we can do housing if we get more money. Well, where's that money coming from? How is that going to be collected? How is it going to be shifted from another, perhaps more important, project that we're trying to do? So I would like to add in here that any discussion from Sacramento on raising taxes on any level, excuse me, or fees, when I was in Sacramento last week on the Revenue and Taxation Policy Committee, they were talking, Betty Yee, the Controller for the State of California, was talking about one of the taxes that they're looking at implementing. But the fact that they had polled the word "tax," and it doesn't poll well, they want to call it a fee instead, which also circumvents some of the two-third majority vote that we have to have for raising taxes. So whether it's a tax, or a fee, or whatever word they want to use, if it's going to talk about bringing more money out of Vista's pockets, I think that's something that we need to talk about before letters are written. So I am asking my colleagues, I would like to move that we add a paragraph in here addressing taxes and revenue enhancement, is the new verbiage, "revenue enhancement." So with that, I think we have some discussion on the dais. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And with referring to taxes, you could do taxes and fees. Okay, Deputy Mayor Franklin.
I would generally agree with Councilwoman Rigby's comments. As the members of the council know, there was a letter sent that seemed to stake out the position of the city, and I appreciate the fact that it was rescinded with correction. But my concern is that this document would seem to empower or authorize the staff to communicate with the legislature or other governmental entities, and to convey the sense of the council on our behalf. And it's my feeling that any issue which would be of significant enough importance for us to make a statement of our collective opinion is important enough to come before each of us in an open meeting and to be discussed. And I'd further liken, and if I can't do this under the current agenda item, I'd like to offer it for a future agenda item, that we have a policy about making official statements of policy on behalf of the city that would follow on to this agenda, so that we could all have an opportunity to review and give our consent or dissent anytime a statement of policy is being made. Is that something that we can do under the current agenda item? Can we have a policy about how we make statement of collective opinion here, or do we need to agendaize that for future discussion?
I think it's probably broader than just, the legislative platform is broad in nature so that we can take action when need be, from a staff perspective. We don't always have council meetings every week, so that we can do that. I think if you want to have a discussion on this issue, and whether you want to have a policy statement or not, I think asking your council colleagues would be best, if you want to bring that back so they can read it and think about it in those terms, or if you want to try to decide to do something on the dais.
I'd love to hear, I'd like to have that conversation, so I would like to ask that to be placed on a future agenda. But, you know, my concern is, and in the discussion with the one other member of the council that I discussed this with, you know, the thought of not actually approving a legislative agenda at all, to prevent such a miscommunication. This is a very broad document, and it leaves the possibility of being incorrectly applied, as was the case in Point recently. And I just, I really don't see, you know, bills in the legislature, in the state, you know, most likely are going to take weeks and months to move through the legislative process. It's not a rapid process. I really can't think of when it was necessary to express the will of the council without the council having an opportunity to meet. And for that reason, honestly, I was rather moved to the idea of perhaps not having an agenda, or of at least making clear the fact that this was not an authority for the staff to act in our stead, you know, to act on specific policy matters with official communications outside of the city, without bringing those items back to us. So...
In a response to that, though, at the end of sessions, you come down to the wire, and you can have a letter that needs to be on somebody's desk within the next eight hours or next 24 hours, and we would not be able to act. So if removing the legislative platform would tie our hands in that sense, because we wouldn't have that broad authority.
Councilwoman Rigby, you might know about that, because you deal with a lot of the legislative things, so, I mean, sometimes they do send things, they'll call me at home and tell me, we need to get something signed right away. So I think the things do come, I think when legislative comes, sometimes it's the last minute, that they're, or they tack things on at the last minute. You might have...
They do tend to tack things on at the last minute into an existing bill, but sometimes one of the tactics for the legislators is, the legislators is, when they have something in committee, and they want it to come out from committee and have an immediate vote before too many people hear about it, what they will do is what they did in this case, and they'll send an emergency alert, you know, action alert letter out, and saying, please, we need all of your letters on this. And that way, they can just kind of say, see all these people who support this, let's just do this right now. And it's, on their end in Sacramento, they're trying to shorten the time period, and shorten the amount of time that people can stand up and say, no, I'm sorry, we're not doing this. So, yes, they try to shorten it, but not always, because it still has to come out of committee, and it still has to go through different processes. So it's not always a very quick process. This is just one of the ways they're trying to say, hey, we don't really need all these hearings, look at all these people that are talking to us, or we don't, it's coming out of committee. So it just depends on, it's Sacramento, I'm sorry. I don't think that, I do not believe that the haste on these letters with the requests that we received, I don't believe that it was warranted, no.
So you're of the mind that you agree with him, that...
I do, I agree with Councilwoman Franklin on that.
You don't want any legislative platform, then?
I don't think that anything is that important, or coming that quickly, not that it's not important, they're all important, but it's not coming that quickly that we would miss an opportunity to voice anything, because we are still being notified of everything coming through the pipe in Sacramento. We're still getting notified, staff is getting notified. I know that we get letters from legislators, we get letters and emails from lobbyists. So just because we didn't get a specific request for action doesn't mean we haven't already heard about what it is. So I don't think that, I don't think that it's necessary for us to have a legislative platform that is that broad, because I think that the letter that went out for SB1 and AB1 is a good example of how, because we want to talk about some of the funding needs that we might have, or projects that we might want to do, it was taken to another step beyond what this council would have wanted to be done. So I think we should bring these things back, especially when they talk about money, if they're talking about raising revenue, whatever the word is they're defining revenue with, it definitely should come back to council before anything is done.
So would you then ask, everything comes, so every agenda we have, we would be going through all the legislative, different things proposed by the legislature? It seems like a lot of extra, to me, that seems like a lot of extra things, because when we have our, or where you just say, maybe if there's a tax or something like that, then that will be brought to us. But do you want everything, do you want everything brought to you, all the...
Well, definitely, anything that has to do with money, if it's coming out of a taxpayer's pocket, we need to have that conversation on a local level. But as far as us spending time talking about the legislative issues coming at Sacramento, and how it impacts us here in Vista on an everyday basis, I am not opposed to having those conversations here.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Franklin, are you still on there?
I would just ask, how many times, I mean, in my two years in the council, I can only remember a handful of these letters, and I can't remember the last letter that was of urgent nature. Could you remind me the last one that was of urgent nature?
Typically, and I'll have Ms. Zimmerman answer the question on how many, but typically, when it gets down to budget bills and things like that, those are of urgent nature, where we need to take a position on something that we don't have the time to bring it before you, because that initiative or act is going to be dealt with.
Having been involved in the legislative process for the last 15 years, I can tell you that there are no new ideas that come on the 11th hour. Ideas are inserted into bills in the 11th hour, absolutely, but those ideas typically take a long time to germinate, and we are generally aware of legislative proposals. And it sounds to me like, you know, we're being reactive to requests from the League of Cities, which may or may not represent our actual point of view in our city. I'm not going to be a blind slave to the League of Cities and whatever they think is best. I want to look and represent the interests of our citizens, you know, on a basis of what I think that they would have us do. So, you know, I think what we need to do is, if we need a letter, we need to get out there early with it, and, you know, early in the legislative cycle, and say, we're in favor of this provision or that provision of AB whatever, and then that can certainly be, you know, if you wanted to draft a letter, the mayor wanted to sign a letter saying, I'd like to call your attention to a letter we wrote earlier in the year, or last year, in support of this proposal, you know, and now this proposal now is included in this bill or that bill, and, you know, we would support the adoption of that proposal. I don't see any reason you couldn't do that without coming back to the council, because then you're just writing a letter referring to a previous letter. I don't think there's all that many of these that are actually needed to be done, and I just would, you know, I would go back to the idea that anything important enough for us to make our collective voice heard in Sacramento might be important enough to come back before us in an open discussion before the council.
I think Ms. Zimmerman has a count total, probably.
Thank you. I do have a count total. In the last legislative session, we sent, I think, letters on 16 bills, and probably four... four or five were kind of the last-minute action alerts. I would also just like to talk more broadly about the legislative platform and the program we have here. In my time in the city, it's been 14 years. I'm not aware of any other moment when we've had a staff inadvertently sent something that maybe the council wouldn't have approved based on the legislative platform. And when we get those requests from the league, we do evaluate the bills against our legislative platform and use the best judgment of what has been advocated and approved by the council in writing those letters. I will say, at the state level, legislation does come fast, much faster than at the federal level. They do things quickly, they do them at the last minute, they gut and amend, they don't necessarily have to send them back to the other house for approval. We did have a voter approve initiative this year to require 72 hours in print before things are signed into law or allowed to move, but as I've heard already, they've found loopholes, they've found, oh, this type of legislation doesn't necessarily count for that. So there could be opportunities where the city's voice wouldn't get to be on the record. That's still the council's decision if they want to move in a direction where we agendize all potential policy decisions, and staff will work with that. But I do not think that this is something that has been happening on a regular basis. We've been always very careful and meticulous to take, we see things come from the league, and then we look at it, and if it's not something that we think falls in our platform, we don't, we don't just follow it because the league asked.
Councilwoman Green.
Just so that I'm clear, it sounds like what my colleagues are saying is that any increase in taxes or fees that's going to adversely affect our citizens must be discussed and approved by the council prior to any letters or statements of supports being issued. And, I mean, that's something that I basically support, is that, hey, if it's going to affect our citizens and it's going to raise their taxes, I definitely don't want my name attached to it without looking at it and making sure it's a feasible benefit for the citizens of Vista. So I think generally, through all that, is kind of what we're saying is, that's our platform, is that, hey, if it's going to affect our citizens and raise our taxes, can we speak about it before we support it? So I don't know if that's too broad as a city, but from a taxation standpoint, that's where I think our citizens are at, and that's where I would be at.
Councilwoman Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think, in general, we're, all five of us are probably going to be on the same page when it comes to taxes and increases of fees on our citizens. So I think we can find words that we can put into this legislative platform. And my understanding for this platform is this is to represent our city, this is not something that we're joining in with the League of Cities, right?
That's correct.
So...
The request came from the League of Cities for the letter.
As Ms. Zimmerman said...
Which letter are you talking about?
We get requests a number of times from the League of California Cities to support or go against bills, far more than the 16 that we took positions on last year. So we do analyze those, and I did apologize to the council that we had a mishap there. But like she said, that doesn't happen very often.
Well, I think that if we just got a little bit more specific in our platform and maybe discuss taxes and fees alone, but I mean, there's things like labor relations, risk management, law enforcement, housing, fire safety, water management. I think we could come up with a platform that the staff could relate to the state and the League of Cities that we could all agree on. I don't think we're going to have a, I'm not seeing that we have a whole lot of things here that we need to, I'm trying to avoid us being up here wordsmithing things for staff, and I think that's what it's going to come down to. But I'm not opposed to discussing things that are going to raise taxes or fees on our citizens if we think that's necessary. But I also believe that staff understands that they're dealing with a pretty conservative board up here, and in general, the city of Vista is pretty conservative as far as when it comes to fiscal sustainability of the city and generally being against most taxes. So I think we can relate that to our staff, and I think they can represent us well in that area. But I'm not totally opposed to, you know, if you guys want to go ahead and discuss every tax and fee that's, I mean, for the most part, I think it's going to be 95% of the time, we're going to say no. And I think staff knows that. So I just don't, I don't want to do away with the platform so that we're up here discussing fire safety and that. I think it's a waste of our time, I think it's a waste of the citizens' times as well.
Would it help if Ms. Zimmerman gave an overview of where the platform was and where it is today? Would that be of use? Because it was very specific at one time.
Yeah, I think so, because, you know, I'm looking back at our history, and it's not like we approved 5-0 every time. In our recent history, there was definitely opposition to our platform, because, you know, we had a council member who didn't agree with all of us, and, you know, that was voiced, it went down 4-1, but I mean, you know, that's the way things go. But that would be helpful, yes.
Well, the platform since I've been here started very broad, and then the city council as a whole started asking for more specifics to be put into the platform, supporting specific statements or things, and then opposing specific statements or things. And what that does is put stuff in kind of a bind where if it doesn't fall in a very pigeonholed section of what's in the platform, then it would be coming back before the council as an item that was outside the platform. And we were directed at that point to make it a more broad platform that focuses on local control, local opposition to mandated regulations, opposition to being told how we can use our money, opposition to be, having any of our funding sources reduced. And by making it more of a broader platform, staff can evaluate bills as they come up, either at the request of the league, at the request of citizens, at the request of council, and determine if this, the legislation falls into those broad platforms, and we would either take a position of support or oppose. Having a broad platform, for the most part, does allow us that flexibility and latitude to evaluate the legislation against the platform, and then make those, draft those letters and get them sent off in a timely manner. A lot of the times, the federal level, it is a lot different, but at the state, it does move pretty quickly when they're getting close to their deadlines to move out of a committee or to move to the other house, and then when they're getting close to the deadline to get things on the governor's desk, things go pretty fast and it's pretty rapid fire. It would be difficult for us to, if there were those high priority issues, to get them in front of a council, even if we found out about it, for example, like this one last Friday, on a Tuesday agenda, in some cases, that might be two days too late. So it really is just something that we've been using and using our own discretion in order to determine which things would fall under the platform. And as you guys see the letters as they go, this is the first time, as I've mentioned, that I've been aware of any issue where we had council members who wouldn't have supported that position that we thought fell under the platform.
Councilwoman Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And my particular issue, aside from the legislative platform and how that's done as a whole, right now, the immediate issue for me is, if we are going to have a legislative platform that staff works with, it needs to have a guideline in here regarding revenue. So my question is, I don't know if it's for Mr. Stone or the city manager, do we need to craft that now? Can we give it back to staff and have staff come back to us at a later time with the verbiage that we could use for this?
Either of those would be possible options for the city council. So a narrow direction is to, the method to deal with new taxes, for instance, could be included within the platform, or if you preferred, staff could be directed to return with new language.
I think the language would be very simple, that any request for revenue enhancement, increased fees, increased taxes, would automatically come to council for full discussion.
We can add that to the preamble of the platform, so that it's very specific in there.
And I am agreeable to that. Do we need a motion, or is that going to just come back? I'll make that a motion. Ms. Valdez, do you need me to reiterate that, or did you get that?
You need to reiterate it, or I can do that.
I move that we add to the preamble of the legislative platform that all discussion regarding revenue enhancement, increase of taxes, fees, or any other definition of more money, come back to the city council for full discussion prior to any staff action.
I'll second it.
And just to clarify, you're also accepting the modifications of the platform that we brought back originally?
Yes, I am, thank you very much. I appreciate those.
Councilwoman Franklin, or Deputy Mayor Franklin, sorry.
That's very similar to what I was going to offer, so I'll join in supporting that.
Okay. Aguilera? Okay. Okay, I guess we're, but that will call for the vote. That motion passes unanimously. Okay, so moving on here, we have no public hearing scheduled for this evening, and so the next thing on our agenda is our discussion item. It's, items scheduled for discussion generally require detailed explanation by staff or the agency member that has requested the item. Tonight, we have one discussion item, mixed-use zone and downtown-specific plan, community development and engineering director, John Conley, will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We started the discussion on this item on January 10th, so we're back to complete it, hopefully tonight. I have a brief presentation based on the direction that I got from the council that gives you some options of dealing with some of the concerns with the increased high-density residential housing, so I'll go through that briefly, and then I'm happy to answer any questions you have or go through specific concerns. So the mixed-use zone is shown in the blue in this, what's on the overhead, and the downtown-specific plan is shown in the magenta or purple, it looks like, on the overhead. These are the two zones that allow for mixed use. Mixed use, as Vista's code defines, is residential or commercial or both, so it could include a residential-only project or a commercial project. The majority of applications that we've had in this zone since its adoption have been residential-only. We haven't got a lot of mixed-use projects that are truly mixed use with commercial ground floor and residential above. We've talked about some of the concerns about that, but the intent now is to focus on the residential development and the extent of it, and potentially limiting that within these zones. So just some brief background, the downtown-specific plan, the purple or magenta area that covers the Santa Fe and Vista Village corridors, was approved in 2010 as part of the city's housing element update. This was the first allowance for mixed use focused on the downtown corridors and the historic downtown area. Later in 2012, when we adopted the general plan update, there was some consideration for some additional commercial corridors, which are the areas shown in blue, as well as some outlying parcels that you'll see up along Bo Beere and Melrose and down along South Melrose at Breeze Hill, which were partially pursued by the property owners of those parcels. I provided this exhibit in your packet, it's Exhibit 2 to last week's staff report. This shows the extent of both zones, again, in a hashed format, with the applications that have come through the planning department within these zones. So this exhibit shows all of the projects that have been approved and built or are proposed since adoption of these zones. So the areas in blue are the projects that have been built, those in green are those that have been approved but are not built, those in yellow are submitted and pending planning approval but not approved, and those red are vacant sites, which are simply noted for the purpose of showing you the remaining vacant land outside the proposed projects. As noted on the slide, there's about 1,000 dwelling units have been completed, about 370-plus that have been approved, and there are 650 proposed within these zones for a total of a little over 2,000 units. So the first thing I wanted to talk about was potential rezones. That's a consideration that the council may look at in addressing residential growth in these areas. As I mentioned, it currently allows for residential and commercial or both. So in an attempt to reduce the potential for residential on these properties, the council may consider rezoning back to commercial use, so it would limit any future residential development and only maintain the zoning for the current commercial use of the property. So in looking at that issue, staff identified five areas that I think are fairly easy considerations, just focused on where there are viable commercial uses that the community may want to maintain, or areas where there's commercial uses that really residential uses wouldn't fit, and so I'll cover those individually. But on a, on the basis of discussing this issue, I've only focused on these areas because, like I said, these were fairly easy to identify, but if there are other commercial zones, areas, or particular land uses that a council wants us to focus on, we can come back with a more detailed report. So the first area is along Breeze Hill Road. This is the area where we've had two applications, one's been built, one's been approved for multifamily. There is a viable commercial center, which is shown in the red, with the red parcel squares here on the left-hand side, that includes the CVS, the Comerica Bank, and the Commercial Strip Center at the southwest corner there. Based on some of the concerns we've gotten from the community about the potential loss of this commercial space and conversion in the future to residential, this is a property that could fairly simply be rezoned back to commercial use. It would preserve the existing commercial uses that are there, and it would restrict residential use in the future. None of the properties that are within this area would be affected by that zoning in terms of what's there and what they'd be able to maintain under the C1 zone, it's all retail-commercial. The second property is up along West Bo Beere, it's right across from where the Sky Apartments were recently built, near Sports Parkway. This is a property that is adjacent to vacant land in the city of Oceanside, which you can see just to the left of the aerial photo there. It's also undeveloped. The same owner owns both properties. It's been considered for commercial use in the future, the Melrose property has. And so, again, this property could be fairly easily rezoned to commercial, it's vacant land. If the property in Melrose develops as a commercial use, they could also combine the Vista project, and it could be one cohesive commercial development. The third site is at the corner of Bo Beere and North Santa Fe, this is the Stater Brothers Center. Staff identified this property because it's a commercial grocery-retail-anchored center. It's got a full host of what we feel are viable commercial uses and fairly decent commercial buildings, and so, again, could be rezoned to commercial to maintain the commercial use of the property and restrict residential uses on any of these sites in the future. Same goes for the Vons Center at the corner of Civic Center and South Santa Fe. This is a little bit of an older commercial center. The staff has pursued property owners improving these properties and as a center, as a whole, fixing it up. It's hard to do that sometimes, so any incentives to do that are always welcome. The only incentives that seem to be in the market right now are combining with a residential developer to do some redevelopment of the property with a residential component, but if that were to come back after a rezoning occurred, the council could consider it as a rezone on a standalone basis. But rezoning, again, this land to commercial use would maintain the commercial uses in the center and not allow any residential conversion in the future. The last parcel is on Service Place on South Santa Fe. This is a little different in that it's largely an auto-oriented service center. It was built and developed that way when it was initially constructed. The mixed-use zoning on this property has limited what some of these commercial occupants can do with the property because they're auto-repair, so the staff recommends that this be rezoned back to commercial just so that they can maintain the uses that they were entitled to when these projects were built. And I don't really see any high potential for residential development on those properties. So that covers the potential rezones. As I mentioned, I'm happy to talk about particular land uses or areas if you want to get into that deeper. The next issue is parking. So there has been some real concerns about the parking standards that are in the mixed-use zone. The staff recommendation in the report was to adopt the citywide parking standards, which are over on the right-hand side there, based on the number of bedrooms, it would be between 2.3 or three spaces per unit. The staff has recommended these changes to the citywide standards based on the concerns expressed about the amount of parking for residential-only projects, so the staff recommendation is to make the change within the zone so that any residential-only project would have to meet the citywide standard. If a developer wanted to build a true mixed-use project that was commercial with residential, they would have the allowance for a reduction only at the discretion of the Planning Commission or the city council. So again, the project would have to stand on its own with respect to a reduction in parking, it would have to include a study that evaluated similar uses to support the reduction, and it would have to come before the Planning Commission and the council for approval in order to allow that reduction. Otherwise, they'd have to meet the citywide standard. We're not recommending any changes to the downtown-specific plan, just the mixed-use zone with respect to parking. We covered building heights, just generally at the last meeting. There's a map included in your packet as well that shows what the allowed building heights are within these zones. Much of the mixed-use zone is 60 feet. The staff is recommending some reductions in specific areas of the plan, which are shown on the overhead, and we covered these the last time. They essentially cover the Civic Center Drive corridor to reduce that from four to three stories, and the southerly South Santa Fe area near Mar Vista, also a reduction from four stories to three. Setbacks is another issue that was discussed. The mixed-use zone enjoys basically zero setbacks, the way it's currently written. A number of the residential projects that have been proposed and gone through the approval process have taken advantage of this to move their buildings closer to the street or closer to the property line. The intent was to provide flexibility in areas where there's urban, smaller lots and walkable streets. It's proven to be difficult in more suburban areas, so the staff is fine with changing the setbacks in the mixed-use zone to meet the citywide standards, which are shown on the right there under the RM zone, 20 feet in the front, 15 on the sides, and 15 in the rear with a 10-foot separation between buildings. This, again, would apply to residential-only projects in the mixed-use zone. If a developer wanted to do a true mixed-use, they would have to go through the discretionary process and request variances as part of that process under the normal review. Landscaping. The landscaping standard in the, in the mixed-use zone is currently 10%. The citywide requirement is for 15%. Again, the staff is fine with changing the requirement to 15%. We see in most of the residential projects, even in the mixed-use zone, that they meet that requirement because there are open space and landscaping standards that they have to meet, and amenity standards that they have to meet, which typically require they get to that point. So the recommendation is to change that to the citywide standard of 15%. Again, for residential-only projects, true mixed-use would be able to request reductions at the discretion of the Planning Commission or the City Council. The last issue is amenities. The Planning Commission recommended that we modify our amenity requirements. Right now, we have a list of amenities that we mandate for projects based on the size of the project. So our current requirements are one amenity for 25 units, two for 50 units, three for 100 units. The Planning Commission recommendation was to reduce that threshold to one amenity for 10 units, two for 25, and three for 50. So any projects greater than that number will be required to comply with those amenities, and that's at the council's discretion. The amenity requirements are included in our design guidelines manual, so it would require some amendment to that, but we visited that issue at the end of 2014, the beginning of last year, and we did not make this change. So the Planning Commission reviewed all of these issues in October of last year. There's, they essentially made the recommendations that the staff has brought before you tonight. That includes changing the parking requirements to meet the citywide standards, changing the setbacks to meet the RM zone standards, changing the landscaping requirements to meet the citywide requirements. All three of those are included in the staff recommendation tonight, as well as to increase the recreational amenity requirements that I just covered. Again, no changes are proposed to the downtown-specific plan, which is the area shown in this graphic. These are the planning areas for the specific plan, and I'm happy to cover those individually as well if the council wants to discuss those. Just to touch on timing in terms of changes, if we obtain direction tonight to make any changes to the zoning, rezones, we'll have to go through CEQA Environmental Review Process, California Environmental Quality Act. We have to prepare a document, put it out for public review, obtain comments, and bring it back to the council with going through that environmental review process. That typically takes a couple months to accommodate, so the changes would have to be made, proposed. The CEQA document would have to be prepared and released, and then we would come back to the council. So the rezones that are being considered tonight, if any, would take probably four to five months before we got back in front of the council with those changes. If there are directions to change the development standards, like I talked about, the parking, the landscaping, the setbacks, those are much simpler because they wouldn't necessarily have to go through environmental review, and we could be back in front of the council with those within a couple of months. It's important to note that all the sites that were considered for potential rezones, none of those have any active or pending planning applications on them at the current time. And that brings us to the grandfathering issue. So there are a number of projects in the pipe, those shown in yellow particularly, that have submitted an application and are pending in planning. This is Exhibit 2, by the way, in your packet. Sorry for the typo on the overhead. It's Page 11 of your packet. The projects that are deemed complete within this area would be grandfathered. In other words, if they submitted a formal application, they were reviewed by the planning staff and determined to meet all of our zoning requirements in their application, we then deem them complete before typically starting environmental review. At that point, that the projects are deemed complete, they are grandfathered. They are in under our older standards, and if the decision-making body denies the project on the basis that they don't meet the new standard, they have a legal issue with the approval granted by the city and, you know, could challenge us in court. So the staff is using that deemed-complete threshold as the point at which the project doesn't have to go back and meet the new standard. All the projects there shown in the yellow on this map have submitted formal applications now and are pending in the planning department, and so we would be using this map, basically, as acknowledgement of those projects that were grandfathered, and anything that didn't make the map or hasn't been submitted by this point would potentially be under the new rules. So that's a consideration for the council because there are other developers out there that may be here tonight that are looking at these zones to submit applications, so it would be good to get the council's feedback on that grandfathering issue to make sure that you're okay with what's on the map versus what might come in the door in the next few weeks. So that completes my presentation, and I'm happy to discuss any of those points individually. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I have, you want to hear the speakers first? I have five speakers. Okay, Councilwoman Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question on the property across from the sky on Bo Beere.
Okay.
So if we revert that back to commercial, I know that Oceanside owns everything west of that and are planning to convert that into commercial development, not convert it, but develop it as commercial. Is there a way that we can limit how that property is used by that commercial development? In other words, what I don't want to see is whatever they put in there, whatever stores and retail development, let's say. And our property in Vista becomes just a parking lot for their stores. Is there a way we can limit so that only so much parking can be put there, or there has to be so much commercial developed on that property before any parking is put on there? You understand?
Looking at Mr. Stone because I think that's more of a covenant type of an agreement that would apply specifically to that property.
Of course. No, I know. It's specific to that property, but...
But it's possible.
The history we've had with our neighbors, that's what would happen. I mean, they own all four corners right there.
So the other option is, I believe that property was zoned A1, agricultural, one-acre minimum, single-family residential, before we rezoned it to mixed-use?
Right.
It could easily go back to that as well.
I'd be okay with that, too. I mean, I, well, I mean, I'm okay with it going back or going to commercial, as long as we could guarantee that we're not going to stand up with a parking lot in Vista for the Oceanside businesses. I don't know if we can do that or not, but if we can't, then I would be in favor of rezoning it back to just residential.
Can I hear the speakers now?
Thank you. That was it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If it were rezoned to residential or to A1 in that event, there could always be a subsequent request for rezoning, and that would be concurrent with some site development plan, which would, you know, allow the city to address the issue of how, whether it was a parking lot or not.
Got it. So then our best bet is to rezone it back to residential? What was it, agricultural?
Yes, one-acre minimum agricultural zone, A1.
Or it could be rezoned to a different...
Or it could be, you could consider a different single-family residential zone.
Yeah, I mean, just like, there's a whole bunch of single-family homes right there. It would fit in if we could put...
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll look at what this...
Agricultural really doesn't make a lot of sense anymore.
I understand.
Yeah, there's a bunch of rocks there anyways. Frog. Yeah, can we keep the frog?
Okay. So I will start with the speakers. Terry Collins? Followed by Wendy Aposhin.
Hi, Terry Collins. I just wanted to say to the council, I appreciate that you are hearing this again tonight and allowing for more speakers. We've seen so many issues caused by the mixed-zone loophole. We've been in the paper now several times, and it would be great if we could solve this problem tonight before more projects start through the pipeline. This was heard through the, heard by the Planning Commission back in October, and it's taken us several months to get here. So more projects have started that we could have prevented not following residential-only when they were really only residential projects. So I do agree with a lot that Mr. Conley has said. I think, I wish the rezoning back to commercial of Breeze Hill would have happened before the Breeze Hill project because that neighborhood has been hurt very hard by all the traffic in the area. We heard last, at the last meeting, the restriping of North Melrose, and how many residents came up here before you and talked about how their complexes did not provide enough parking. So if we could definitely raise the parking limits, requirements up, so we don't have that issue again, where people can only park, really only park in the street, and then later on we come along and restripe, and now they don't have any parking. So we need to solve that issue. One of the things that I've noticed in many of the Planning Commission meetings is the, is the lack of amenities, so I do, again, appreciate that we are going to increase that. I hope that you do go along with that tonight. We just had a project that we saw on North Melrose, and there really is no greens, active green space for kids, and no matter what your income level is here in Vista, everyone deserves active green space. So I really want to make sure that we make, that we increase that and have a place for all of our kids to play, especially in the walkable downtown area, since we haven't added any additional parks or dog parks. The people, the kids who are living along alleys need active green space and not to be playing in alleys, and that might be something that's going to happen with some of these that we've seen, like North Melrose, excuse me, North Santa Fe. So we really need to stop this mixed-use loophole. If it's residential-only, then let's increase the requirements and make sure that the developers are not taking advantage of our loophole and changing our community on their behalf and not for the betterment of all Vistans. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, real quickly, I promised Ms. Collins I would point this out because I didn't point it out last week, or two weeks ago. The property that's down in the corner here on South Santa Fe that shows is 96 units at the corner of Mar Vista Drive in South Santa Fe, the Winslow property, it's approved for 96 units as apartments. I mentioned at the meeting on the tent that it didn't look like that developer was going to move forward. That's probably true. However, there has been another application submitted on that property for 72 condominium units, which went to the Planning Commission last Tuesday night, so I just wanted y'all to be aware that there is still an active application on that site. Thank you.
Okay, Wendy, and then followed by Nikki Hobson.
Hello. My name is Wendy Saposhin, and I live at 1324 Cypress Drive, and I've been a resident in Vista for 34 years, and it's been a long time since I've been driving through the blighted Santa Fe corridor, so I'm really excited about what's happening downtown and thrilled with the gentrification, and I'm in support of the higher density with businesses down below in the city center. I think it's a really great idea that if it's planned and designed correctly. However, as you leave that redevelopment area and you go to these other areas like in Breeze Hill and North Melrose and out Vista Way, it makes less sense to build these high-density apartments or condominiums because you're not creating the benefit, benefit of a walkable community, which is really, I think, what was the plan of the downtown-specific area. Mixed use, in the true sense of the world, makes for a fantastic, walkable, livable community and encourages business development where residents can spend their discretionary money, as long as the developed residences are not singularly affordable. I've been discouraged with what the density has created as far as the traffic and congestion and the lack of parking for the residents. If you go down to Danny's Donuts on early Saturday or Sunday morning, there's parking in those parking spots that are used by the residential people that live in Paseo, Santa Fe, or are visiting them at least. I don't like the fact that the developers have manipulated it so that we don't put those businesses down below because I think, I feel very cheated that I don't have that opportunity to have a little bit more of a walkable community. And I think that when you build things clear out to the curb like that, we should have that opportunity to slow down and stop and shop, which I think was the initial plan of all this. These overbuilt housing units seem to go, be the go-to for the plan of the city. We aren't getting coffee houses, flower shops, galleries included in these communities, and I think there's a need for affordable business rents so small businesses can provide some needed tax revenue for all of us. If the large developments are going to be strictly residential, then large setbacks in the street are needed with more than adequate parking and open space that includes areas to throw a ball, pools, picnic tables, bocce courts, and shady spaces for children to play away from dangerous traffic. Many cities in the state include green areas that are developed along with big-density things like this, so it kind of break up that ratio of asphalt and stucco with a park-like setting. So I think we need to watch the overgrowth of the roads because they've been burdened beyond reasonable safety, and many of the smaller roads are being used as dangerous speedways to cut through residential streets in order to bypass heavily congested traffic stops. The roads and traffic need to be improved by developers prior to occupancy for safety. And I see that we've built about 2,081 units so far in the planning, and the statistics I found is the next closest is San Marcos with only 1,007, and then Carlsbad with 588. So I'm kind of confused as to why we're continuing to do this and close up our open space. So what I'd like to do is eliminate the loophole and slow down this residential expansion that's not in the city center so we can get a safe handle on the traffic, safety, and parking before we...
Wendy, your time is up.
Thank you for creating a thoughtful and safe community for us.
Thank you. Nikki Hobson, followed by Stephanie Jackel.
Good evening. My name is Nikki Hobson, and I live at 2070 Ridgeline Avenue. I've lived in Vista for 25 years, and I love it. I kind of want to echo what John Conley said because I'm mainly concerned with the, using the lower mixed-use standards for landscaping, setbacks, and parking, but I see that John has come up with some better recommendations for that, so I would basically ask you to, to follow his lead and approve that. You know, if you don't, you know, what we're doing is just building ghettos in Vista. I think the Breeze Hill apartment development is awful, but it's there, and we're going to live with it for, who knows, 50, 75 years? Well, I won't be there, but, but you all will. Anyway, but thank you very much for considering my views.
Thank you. Stephanie Jackel, followed by Michael McSweney.
Good evening. I'm Stephanie Jackel, 1500 Green Oak Road. I'm speaking here as a Vista resident and also as a member of your Planning Commission. My first point is to ask you, please, to agree to modify the multifamily guideline to provide more amenities for residents of multifamily residential projects. This is the second time the Planning Commission has asked for this, to make these projects more livable and attractive for residents. It's truly needed, and I hope you will agree. My second point is to speak about the very evident need to make some changes in the current mixed-use zone. The current zone allows projects that are 100% residential, 100% commercial, or true vertical mixed-use. Now I wonder, why did we do that? Now I wonder, why did we do that? As has been shown all too clearly in the Avaline Apartments project, the 100% residential simply does not work. The project itself is too dense and crowded, and even more, it spreads its problems destructively into other neighborhoods. This just can't keep happening. Now we're looking at the upcoming Breeze Hill Apartments to further intensify these problems for the several Breeze Hill neighborhoods in the area. That's just not good for Vista. This zone has created huge difficulties for the Planning Commission, as we wrestle with ways to try to mitigate the damage that we know we're imposing on other Vista residents. If we're saying we want a true mixed-use zone, then why not stipulate it that it has to be true mixed-use, commercial and residential together in one project? If a developer wants to create a 100% residential project, then name it residential and have it comply, excuse me, with all the established multifamily residential requirements for parking, setbacks, building height, and landscaping. I don't think there should ever be an allowance for reduced parking in a residential project. If it's 100% commercial project, then it should come under Vista's regular commercial zoning. If it's actually a true mixed-use, then it can be considered under a revised mixed-use zone. Otherwise, I agree with Mr. Connolly's recommendations for changes to the development standards for the mixed-use zone. And I agree with the proposed rezonings that he's discussed. Please take the opportunity to correct the problems with the mixed-use zone before other Vista neighborhoods are damaged. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Michael McSweeney, followed by Val Brown.
Happy New Year, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Michael McSweeney, Senior Public Policy Advisor at the Building Industry Association. I wanted you to look at the parking ratios. I've talked to you before that, you know, your parking ratios are the highest of all the cities in North County. And the average cost of a parking space on a development is $15,000. It also, by increasing your parking, increases impervious space, which increases stormwater runoff, which is a whole nother set of problems that you'll have to deal with. But when you look at a studio apartment, or a one-bedroom apartment, requiring 2.33 spaces, it seems kind of exorbitant. I know that your parking consultant, when you went through this whole phase before, had recommended lower parking ratios. And I just want you to realize that, you know, housing is an issue that's been talked about a lot. We don't have enough of it, we don't produce enough of it, and when you take these kind of actions, it makes it that much harder to produce. I heard some of the comments tonight about, you know, feeling deprived of a walkable community. Market dictates use, and I think what you've seen with the attempt to try and do mixed use in your city is there doesn't seem to be enough demand for the space for the commercial end of it. And if a developer and their lender specifically look at their market pro forma, if they don't see the ability to rent that at what their rate of return would be, the lender's going to want to just zero it out. So that makes that development that much more difficult to bring to market. And last but not least, by adding amenities, you're adding costs, and that is borne by the future residents. So in effect, you're making housing that much more expensive. So I think that, I understand what your residents and what, I know, speaking with Mrs. Rigby, what your thought process is, you know, the fairness issue is, every one of these things that you do, this is like a three-dimensional chess game. When you tweak over here, it causes something else over there. It's the law of unintended consequences. But the end result is, it ends up making housing more difficult to bring to market and constrains the supply. And the constrained supply has been the single largest factor of why we find ourselves in the position we are today. Thank you.
Thank you. Val Brown.
Mayor, Council, Val Brown, Tobe Hill Drive. Neighborhoods are being destroyed using this mixed-use zoning, and future opportunities to create livable communities in Vista are gone forever. We are living with unintended consequences. I understand that this is a system, if you touch one thing in one area, something's going to happen in another. And what I would like to say tonight is there are three really important things to look at that can be addressed tonight. Citizens of Vista deserve leadership that will act immediately to protect our quality of life and address these unintended consequences of this zoning immediately. We know what's happened, and the question is how to move forward. Consider closing the loophole today and stop processing applications using this zoning for purely residential developments until a new standard is agreed upon and put into place. There are some other things that need to be addressed. Define mixed-use as commercial and residential. If you want high-density housing, label it high-density housing and the appropriate standards that go with it. Please do not reduce the parking requirements. We all know firsthand, you've seen lots of pictures of what's happened to Breeze Hill, there is no parking. Look at Cedar Road, there is no parking. North Melrose, there is no parking. Maybe we shouldn't be building high-density housing in these areas that have no parking. Do we need to be looking out further than just today and profit? The third thing that you can do is look at the building height citywide. I'm not sure that what was intended in the Vista Division 2030 for North Melrose was walls of 40-foot buildings or 60-foot buildings. And everywhere you see blue in that area has the potential to do that. Some current concerns that I have about not really having mixed-use be mixed-use is we're leaving ourselves vulnerable, just as we are today. We were told that you could do absolutely nothing to help us on Breeze Hill, because of the law, and it checked the boxes. I disagree with that, because I do believe that there are conditions that could have been put on that. But there are new laws that have been passed in September that make it very difficult for us, once affordable housing has been brought into the mix, to do anything about a project. I would really encourage you to consider that. I'd also like to have you look at the densities that we have. If you are going to leave residential in mixed-use, lower those densities. That would be, you know, a step towards helping out this problem. So in closing, I guess my question is, is do we really need more high-density housing in Vista? Please take steps tonight to rectify this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. That's our last speaker, so Deputy Mayor Franklin.
I think this is a big subject, so to eat the proverbial elephant one bite at a time. I want to deal with these issues, I would propose that we deal with these issues one at a time. I think it'd be easier. In that vein, I'd like to propose that we, referring back to Mr. Connolly's Exhibit 1, page 4 of 69, I'd like to make a motion that in each of the areas that are identified as potential rezone, that we rezon these areas to commercial, with the exception of the property at the intersection of Bobier and Melrose on the south side of Bobier, that we rezon that one to the residential zone that had previously been zoned. So that's accepting Mr. Connolly's proposal with the sole exception of the, changing the Frog Rock property back to the estate residential. Does anybody have any questions about my motion?
Councilmember Aguilera.
I just want to be clear, we're talking about the five properties? Only, right?
If you look on page 4 of 69, which is marked Exhibit 1, D1.
Yep.
So it's all the properties that are black hashed, as described in the key as potential rezone. Those are the properties that I'm.
With the exception of this one.
With the exception of the one called out on the, on the screen, in which case that particular property would go back to, what is it, R1?
The prior zoning was A1, one acre minimum, but.
Yeah, suggesting R1.
R1 is single-family residential, 10,000 square foot minimum lot size, about four units to the acre.
I think it's six, one half dozen of another, so if that's what you're.
Yep.
Okay, if you would second that, then that's fine by me.
Can we do that? Two things, we have to vote on breaking him up, number one, and then, number two, vote on his motion, right?
That's what I got.
Okay, that's fine.
So say it one more time.
Yeah, so to repeat the motion, I would move that we accept staff's proposal marked Exhibit 1, D1, on page 4 of 69, and that we rezon each of the properties identified in the map key as potential rezone with the black diagonal striping. Each of those properties be rezoned to the commercial zone, with the sole exception of the property south of Bobier at the intersection of Sports Park, and that that particular property be rezoned R1. That's my motion.
And that includes the Breeze Hill, the Breeze Hill?
It does, it includes the two commercial properties at the Breeze Hill Development, so that they would be reserved for commercial in perpetuity.
Councilmember Aguilera, did you have?
Yeah, just, no, I second it, that's it.
Okay, so you're done?
Yep.
Okay, Councilmember Rigby.
Regarding the Breeze Hill property, it doesn't happen too often, but it has happened, that a project that has been approved, put through the process, et cetera, does not actually come to fruition, which is one of the things that we're dealing with over on Mar Vista, correct? So a second person has come in and is going to try to build something there. I would actually like to include all of that Breeze Hill parking shopping center there, not just the two parcels in the red, but the whole center to be, so that if the current project fails to come to fruition, we can't, we will not have a second person coming in trying to do mixed-use on that property. Is there a way we can do that? Because I know he's grandfathered in, so if we change it now, it's not going to affect him, but if his project falls through, I want to make sure that we have a safety net in that neighborhood.
Mr. Stone.
So the, under the proposal, in the event that grandfather rights are extended to the current entitlement, that would be possible to rezon the property, so that if the entitlement's lapsed, the new zoning would be in place. However, I, and I would, of course, in the event the new zoning did take place and the grandfathered project proceeded, it might, I can't recall exactly the project, might have some non-conforming issues associated with it, Mr. Connolly.
You would create a legal non-conforming situation where you have a land use on a property that has different zoning. So we have those situations around town, but essentially what it means is the development would not be able to make any improvements that would require a building permit, because it wouldn't conform to the zone. So they could build the development as approved, but in terms of expansions or modifications in the future, they'd be limited to what, only what was approved.
I'm okay with that.
So they'd have to come back to the council for a variance, if you will.
It really doesn't lend itself to that, they would have to actually change the zoning if they wanted to expand the use, which would, yes, have to come back to the council. It would essentially limit what's been approved to.
What's been approved.
And there'd be no other change. Unless it was to change to commercial use.
So my thought is to include this property in the motion, that it would be, the other two, well, I guess that one building, that part of the parking lot is just one parcel?
So you're referring to the vacant Strip Center building or the Breeze Hill apartment project site?
Right.
Understood.
Okay. Is that agreeable for your motion?
I'm not, I'm not in disagreement. It might be a very good idea, but is there, I'd like to hear from the rest of the council.
Councilmember Aguilera.
I think this is what we were referring to earlier, where we have these unintended consequences. What if they want to build a parking structure to relieve parking? I don't know, I mean.
Well, that's something that would come back to us. But my position is, if, as has happened, this project falls through, then that parcel is still stuck in a mixed-zone, mixed-use zone, and this could happen again. And if we have an opportunity that we can take this parcel out of the mixed-use zone so that we don't have to do this again, that's the opportunity that I want to make sure that we don't miss. So like the parcel down on Mar Vista, what was the timeframe from that project? We are now saying it's not going to happen, but yet there's a second one right there behind it coming through. Now that timeframe could be between our two meetings, am I correct? So my point is, we have to have a safety net on these parcels, because this Breeze Hill project should never be happening. It's the worst thing that could happen to Vista as a whole and that neighborhood in particular. So if, if, and, you know, something does happen and it doesn't come to fruition, we want to make sure that we're protected and that another mixed-use property isn't going to come in right on the heels of the first one. So that's, and I'm happy to do that as a separate motion if you need to.
I will second that as a separate motion, but in the interest of progress through these issues.
Separate.
Yeah, but I will second that.
Okay.
So are we, Councilmember Green.
I just had a question about the grandfathered entitlement that you spoke of. Is there a timeframe on that? Because it sounds like what you said is that, hey, the developer already has that approved, and he can grandfather his entitlement to another developer? Is it like, no? Sorry.
The entitlement runs with the land. So for instance, you're right, if the land were sold, the entitlement would run with that land. If it's not exercised within a particular period of time, then, you know, it could lapse, or alternatively, if it weren't built. So if the entitlements are abandoned, and they later on want to come back with a new project.
Okay.
The new project would be governed by the exist, new zoning. And so there'd be two possibilities. One possibility would be, the new zoning could be commercial. In which case, it would only be a commercial development. The alternative would be for the mixed-use zone to apply. And it could also be, the new standards for the mixed-use zone is I would have increased parking requirements.
Okay.
So if there were a new entitlement for the mixed-use zone, it would not be parked in the same manner as the current entitlement is.
Okay, thank you.
So do, do we want to take the first motion first and go with that? And then, and then we can talk maybe further about the second motion?
Yep.
Okay. So please cast your votes on the first motion. Okay, that one passes unanimously, so, and then the second motion, just so you know for, and I'm getting sick, you guys, I have a bad throat here. But my problem is that the commercial in that area has failed, they've tried it and it's failed there, so I don't want to go back to putting it back to commercial again and seeing the stores there just being empty. I don't, I don't see, you know, so that would be my problem with that, with that motion. So I don't have a problem with, you know, protecting the front part, but the back part, I have a problem with what would go there, so. I see I have a lot of speakers here, so Councilmember Franklin.
You know, with regard to that property, I think that it was very poorly planned. It was a very bad development concept, the way they built the property. There was no street frontage, which was a real mistake. I think that a different commercial, and by the way, we have to keep in mind, we are, we are, you know, creating a lot of new density, and Vista's not going to stop growing. we are, you know, creating a lot of new density, and Vista's not going to stop growing. We're going to continue to grow by roughly 1% per year, and so we've got to protect some ability for commercial in the future, and I, I actually think this is a very clever thought, and I support the idea. I don't think that the inconvenience of having to reapproach, you know, we're certainly not going to be punitive, you know, if the applicant has some non-conforming use, we're certainly not going to stand in their way of building a parking structure or something, or I should say a covered parking, you know, or something that would obviously fit with the, with the, with the existing use. So that being said, I, I think that this is a sharp idea, you know, and it may give us that additional bite at the apple that we wish we had, so I'm going to support it.
Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I was going to make that point as well. This shopping center was never really very successful, but it was not built correctly, it was not built for the community, it was very bad planning and bad design, and I think that had a lot to do with the fact that it wasn't successful, along with some other mitigating issues that were going on at that shopping center. So I think that it has potential, were it to be developed and planned a lot better, I think it has potential to be a vibrant or thriving retail opportunity for that part of the community. So I think it is important that if we have an opportunity to capture that property, and I don't know that we will, his project might go through just fine, but if we do have that opportunity, I don't want to miss it. And I appreciate that we're having this conversation tonight, and that we are finally going to be dealing with this. I'm just very sad that we weren't able to have this conversation a year ago when I first brought this up, so I want to say thank you to having the conversation tonight. So I still am going to put that motion out, that we, we take the Breeze Hill property at Breeze Hill and Melrose, and put that, rezone that back to commercial, and then as Councilwoman Franklin said, you know, if that project goes through and everything is fine, whatever additions they need, come back to us, and we'll have that discussion.
Councilmember Regulera?
I guess maybe my concern was answered, but since this really wasn't on the agenda, and the property owner wasn't notified that his property was going to be changing, is that an issue?
No, we notified all of the property owners within the mixed use zone and the downtown specific plan for this item, so they did receive a notice of the discussion.
But I'm saying, this guy here, whoever owns Breeze Hill-
But to answer your question, it still has to go through a rezone process, public hearings at both the Planning Commission and the City Council, we're legally obligated to notify them of those hearings-
Okay.
-if you want to have a discussion where they're present, we would have to continue the item and-
I'm just, just want to be legal about how we handle this.
I mean, I can defer to Mr. Stone, I'm pretty sure you're okay.
I know it wasn't something I was aware of.
Mr. Conley is correct that notice went out, that this is a, a topic within the agenda item that the council can consider before there's actually a true change in zoning. Of course, there would be a full notice and hearings on the matter, so it's within discretion of the council to address tonight.
Okay, I can support it.
But the notice was for the front part of the, of the, you know, a lot, it wasn't for the back part, wasn't for the part that the-
Well, no, what I'm saying, Mayor, is we, we included notice to all of the properties within the mixed use zone, regardless of whether they were proposed for rezone or not, they were all notified.
Okay. Councilmember Rigby? Okay, so, seeing no other discussion, do you want to have a vote on it, I guess? Motion passes four to one. So, moving on, what's the next part? What's the next thing we're going to tackle?
Madam Mayor?
Oh, sorry, Councilmember Green?
I'm just wondering if I'm allowed to run to the restroom super quickly? Is that okay?
Oh, take a five-minute break?
Less than that, 30 seconds, I'll be fast.
We'll go five minutes.
How about a five-minute break, I could stretch my legs.
Five-minute break, five-minute break.
Sorry.
I can wash my hands.
Do you want to be on while we come back? Do you want to be on there when we come back?
Okay, we're to call our meeting back to order. And I think the best way to go through this now is to go, maybe we go piece by piece here. And so we'll start with, from there we'll go to our development standards. We'll go into the parking, actually. So, let's talk about the parking. Councilmember Franklin, or Deputy Mayor Franklin, I'm sorry, I keep doing that today, sorry.
Well, I, you know, I had it in my mind, I was gonna offer an amendment on the amenities thing, because I thought it was the easiest. But we can't talk about the parking. I'll, I'll, I'll switch and I'll talk about parking.
Let's just, if we go in an order, then we can get through it.
That's fine, I don't have a problem with that.
That would help.
You know, I, I am, I am concerned that we had, the, the mixed-use zone was created and implemented as an incentive for developers to build in areas where they were economically disadvantaged, or where we really wanted new investment and development. And it was a grave mistake and oversight that the Breeze Hill properties, you know, and if you, if you just look at the map, those are the outliers. That, that one property, or the two properties that are Breeze Hill, they were the outliers. They were the ones that just clearly didn't belong there. And there was the one mistake, and we're, we're where we're at with that. However, I want to be absolutely positive that we don't do something that reduces the opportunity or incentive for a developer to invest in one of the corridors in our city that desperately needs new investment and new vibrancy. And that is, I'm, 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 I'm gonna stand up for that, because there are areas of our community that really need investment. And, you know, in those areas, I mean, you know, we've got lots of crime, we've got drug issues, we've got dilapidated vacant properties, and, you know, if somebody wanted to come and spend real money there to try and make a difference, I, I just feel like we'd be hard-pressed to, to say we want to make it more difficult in those areas. Now, getting down to what those areas are, and whether there are any areas left that really don't belong in the mixed-use, we just removed five that we didn't feel belonged in the mixed-use zone. But my concern about, you know, and, and I'm all about the, the parking. And in fact, you know, one idea that I had was, and I'm, I'm just kinda throwing this out there to see where the council's mind is, but instead of going to the residential parking standard, which is, as was pointed out, is the largest standard in the county, what I was thinking perhaps is to go from a studio apartment, actually, I'd probably keep the studio at one and a quarter, but for the, for the one, one bedroom, I might go to one and a half, and for the two-bedroom, maybe go from, we're, we're presently at two, I would go to maybe two and a quarter, and then for the three-bedroom, I'd go to two and a half. So I think that would be, with the exception of the studio, that would otherwise be a quarter of a parking space increase for each bedroom, which would be a slight increase in the mixed-use standard. But the rest of the mixed-use properties really are more in the transit corridor, where one could very easily catch a bus to get down to the Transit Plaza without, you know, it, I mean, I, I rode a bus for two years of my life and, and rode it to a train, and, you know, and one of the things that always vexed me was where to get the bus that's going where I want to go. Well, if you live on Santa Fe and you get the bus that's going north and south of Santa Fe, that's pretty easy. I don't have a problem with, you know, the opportunity for folks to have a house there where they may not own a lot of vehicles. You know, there's so many places there that, you know, we all, we all know these parts of the community, they really need somebody to come in and build something quality, which is why when we get to the amenities discussion, I, I do want to suggest that we increase amenities. But I'm a little, I'm a little cautious or hesitant to just say the mixed-use parking standard doesn't make sense anywhere, because, you know, there are some places where if we dramatically increase the amount of pavement that's required, then we're gonna dramatically reduce the incentive for somebody to build something there, where we really actually want people to build something and take a chance on that part of town. And I'm, I'm afraid that, I don't want to deny those people that live in that part of the, the city, the, the great opportunity to have somebody come and increase their property values, make their part of the, of the city safer, beautify their part of the city. I mean, there's a lot of, there was a lot of excellent rational thinking that went into the, you know, the zoning there. Again, we had the one mistake that we all know about, but this really made a lot of sense. So that's my thoughts on the, on that right now.
Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I somewhat agree with what you're saying, but I think that the discussion really should focus on, if something is, if something is truly mixed-use, I think where they should have the mixed-use parking requirements. If it's not, I think if it's residential, then we move it to a residential parking. So I would be inclined to kinda support that and stick with the mixed-use. But my thoughts are, and I think the areas that you're probably, because I was watching your fingers over there pointing at, are the areas that I'm most concerned with, and that's North Santa Fe.
Yep.
That's an area that needs a lot of investment from our community, but hopefully from outside developers. We've got vacant land that, you know, I, I see homeless, I see a lot of trash, you know, and I, I always go back to what our goals are as a council, and one of the biggest things that we've talked about for years is removing blight from our city. Road improvements, of course, traffic has been an issue, but if you look at North Santa Fe, it's probably the area of our city that needs the most investment, you know, not just from the city, but from outside development. And, you know, when the mixed-use idea came up, it was with this in mind, this area, you know, plus our downtown, of course, as well. And it's, you know, downtown is, is, is well on its way, but North Santa Fe is still not. And I would suggest that we incorporate, instead, basically eliminate mixed-use there and incorporate the downtown-specific plan, which has worked very well for our downtown in, in getting dollars into that area. But we have to, I believe, have incentive for developers, you know, and if we take away the incentive for a developer to come into North Vista, that part of North Vista, it's gonna sit the way it's at, or has sat for decades. I mean, since I'm, I was a kid here, it's pretty much the same. I mean, there's no difference. I mean, you know, JC's over there shaking his head, yeah. Yeah. You know, it's really not different. So I think it's very important, I think you make a good point, that we don't want to remove the incentive for these developers to want to put money into that part of our town, because we will not remove the blight. And I drive that area all the time, I live in North Vista, so this, this does affect me directly, and, but I see graffiti, I see, you know, crime committed down there. We call all the time on things that are going on that shouldn't be going on in that part of town, especially on the vacant lots and that, and I would really like to see somebody come in and, and maybe develop something. I know the city manager and I discussed one particular property that's a, is a pretty vibrant little strip mall just north of CHW, the Community Housing Works. Just north of that, there's a little strip mall there, it's an old strip mall. I'd love to see that, you know, revitalized, but it's actually pretty busy, it's just a little rundown, but I, I could see that, you know, with the businesses down below and, and some living above that. I mean, it's, it is a busy shopping center, one of the few in that area, but then you go further north to Beau Beer and North Santa Fe, and we have a shopping center that is at least 50% empty, and it's a nice shopping center. So just because it looks nice, doesn't mean a business is gonna come and fill it up. I mean, the Salvation, where the Salvation Army used to be, it's empty. You know, there's a few businesses, the Dollar Store went out of business there, and it was just, you know, it was a, it was a little dollar store, mom-and-pop dollar store, but the, when the commercial dollar store that went in across the street, I guess, probably put them out. So, you know, beautiful shopping centers, they put a lot of money into it, but 50% empty, you know? So we need to get some people up there that, that are gonna go to those stores and, you know, frequent those stores. You know, I'm very much in favor of what we talked about the last motion, you know, the Stater Brothers and that, keeping it commercial, because that's a necessity, I think, in that area. A lot of people go to those businesses. But I think anything south of the Stater Brothers needs help. And I think that if we change that to the downtown-specific plan, we have control over it, we'd have a little bit more parking. If you look at the downtown-specific plan, the parking is increased over mixed-use. So we would be killing two birds with one stone.
Although the, the parking for one bed does go from 1.5 to 2, 1.25, so it does go down on that one.
Yeah, I see that. But I think overall, your average, I mean, if you average, you know, you average a project, the parking is gonna go up quite a bit. I mean, three-bedroom is 2.75, I mean, you're adding a half for that one, a quarter for the one before that, so I think overall, you're gonna get more parking. That's my comment on that.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I, I think we definitely need to distinguish between, in the mixed-use areas, pardon me, when we come to the decision on the mixed-use, which I am looking at the staff recommendation in the revised agenda report that we were given. Actually, there, there was no column in the revised report for staff recommendation, it was the original one, and I don't, was there a reason it wasn't included in the second one?
Yes. I originally was gonna recommend some lower standards than the citywide standards, but the city manager talked me out of it.
Well, I, I see what's in here is not the same as what's on the slide, so I wasn't...
Because I initially wrote the staff report to recommend a different standard than the citywide standard, but after discussion internally, we decided it would just be best to go with what the planning commission recommendation was. So when I revised the staff report, I erroneously did not take that column out of the table, that's why it's provided.
Thank you. And notwithstanding what, what Councilmember Aguilera said, because I think that's a different discussion, changing that corridor to the downtown-specific plan designation, because I think right now we're talking parking particularly, in the mixed-use zone. And so I would, two things I would like to do, I would move that we accept staff's recommendation as it's on the slide, not the staff report, for the increase in parking for mixed-use, and if it's residential only, no true mixed-use, it has to go through residential parking requirements. So that would be what I, I would move. I would have moved to accept staff's recommendation. Does that have to be two separate motions, to make sure that any requirements in the mixed-use zone, if it's a residential-only project, it reverts to the standards of mixed use or residential only? Do we have to have that discussion separately?
I'm actually somewhat confused. So if it were only residential, it would follow the citywide standards, is that correct?
If it, if it were only residential, even if it's put into a mixed-use zone, if it's only residential with no component of a mixed-use, then it would have to follow the, the regular residential development standard.
And if it did include a, a mixed-use component, what standards would apply in that event?
Well, that's what we're talking about, mixed-use.
Yes, yes, you could divide up the vote on the
Right.
...standard that would apply if it were purely a residential development within the mixed-use zone, and...
Because I, I think part of what happened is with, with Avalon and now Breeze Hill, we have these developments in a mixed-use zone, but they're residential only, they're not mixed-use. So they were built with the, the lower standard, and we want to make sure that doesn't happen again. So my point is, we have these mixed-use standards that you want, that we want to change to, but if it is really residential only, it has to go by residential only.
Right, I understand. I would say that the chance that you're gonna get true mixed-use is not very high, in my opinion, just based on the market and what we've seen.
Right.
So my recommendation was just change the standard and make all the residential-only projects comply with the new standard, and if we do get a new mixed-use, true ground-floor or commercial residential above application, it can come through the process with its own review, and it can stand on its own with a parking study that shows the parking that's needed for that particular project. And in a mixed-use scenario, that's probably the best way to deal with it, because there's not one-size-fits-all. As I said in the staff report, each one has different parameters or components depending on the density of residential, the type of commercial, the type of, and time of use they want to use the parking. So my recommend, my recommendation is make the change to the citywide standard and leave it at that, and if there is a true mixed-use project, they have the opportunity to obtain a reduction at the discretion of the decision-makers.
I, I like your recommendation, and I move that we accept staff's recommendation on the parking.
Councilmember Green, I'll go through the other speakers, and then we'll...
Yeah, I just had a question. Councilmember Aguilera said that he recommended we, we change it from the MU zone to the, to a downtown-specific plan. My question for that is, are we just saying for parking, or are you saying change it in general? Because my question with the downtown-specific plan is, I know there's other restrictions of that area that aren't in the MU zone, you know what I mean? As far as like, the only one that comes to mind is the drive-through thing, you know, you can't have drive-through in downtown. I'm just wondering, is, are we only saying the DSP for parking, or are we saying move it to the DSP as a whole? Because if we're doing that, then it, I don't know, that's my question.
I don't know if we can do that just for parking.
Sure you can, I mean, we can identify the specific areas where you want different parking standards to apply in the zone, if you want to handle it that way.
Yeah. I mean, my thought was just parking at this point, I mean, I hadn't really thought about that, to be honest. But yeah, because especially if we do support Councilwoman Rigby's motion here, then we just destroy that whole, there's never gonna be any development on North Santa Fe. I mean, there hasn't been in 50 years, there won't be for the next 50 years. So, yeah, for the parking, yeah. Because I think there's other things that, that probably need to be discussed as far as building height and all that, too, right?
Yeah, we're still covering that.
Yeah. Okay.
So can we just go with the parking, then, for the, for that area, that whole area?
So what I'm hearing is you want to keep the lower, have a lower parking standard, which is yet undefined, but I got some numbers from Councilman Deputy Mayor Franklin, in the North Santa Fe corridor, but the rest of the zone would be the citywide standard. And that's something we can do when we come back. It would be good to have some consensus on what you want that lower parking standard to be.
North Santa Fe.
Did you want to provide direction on those numbers now?
Or I can make some recommendations when we come back.
Yeah. Um, you know, it's interesting, Councilman Green had the, the packet from the former, when this was brought to the force before, which has a staff recommendation in it, for 1.25 for studio, 1.75 for one-bedroom, 2.25 for two-bedroom, and 2.75 for a three-bedroom. I, I want to revise, and I want to make another motion, which is that we amend the mixed-use zone to go, and the new parking standards to be as follows. 1.25 for a studio bedroom, 1.5 for a one-bedroom, 2.25 for a two-bedroom, and 2.75 for a three-bedroom. This would mean that the only changes to the mixed-use zone parking requirements would come to the two and the three-bedroom. And again, the, the, it would be one and a quarter for studio, one and a half for a one-bedroom, those remain the same, and for the two-bedroom, 2.25, according to staff's previous recommendation, and for the three-bedroom, 2.75, according to staff's previous recommendation. So that's, that's the motion I would make.
And to clarify, the difference is just in the one-bedroom? It's a quarter percent higher.
No, the, the difference between the existing mixed-use parking is only for the two and three-bedrooms.
The downtown-specific plan is just on the one-bedroom.
Exactly. That's only for the North Santa Fe corridor, right? Yeah.
Yeah, except that the DSP reduces the one-bedroom, oh, yeah, 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 it's the only difference.
Yeah, you'd be a quarter percent higher.
But we'd be leaving the, the one-bedroom standard the same. So, that, if that's clear to everyone, that's the motion that I would make.
Did, Councilmember Rigby, did you get a second on your motion?
I don't recall if I did or not. Did anybody second my motion?
No, I'll second your motion, by Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Well, I was, since Deputy Mayor Franklin basically said what I said, right, with the adjustment, we, we just basically adjusted the one-bedroom, I'll second that motion.
That's, is that, is a new motion for North Santa Fe? Is that a new one?
Yeah, just for North Santa Fe, though.
So we're talking two different things here.
Yeah, I'm lost, do we have two different motions with seconds on the floor right now?
We do.
I think we better consider Councilwoman Rigby's motion first.
And your motion is for just the citywide, for everything that's residential?
Correct.
Whether it's mixed-use, I mean, not mixed-use, whether it's
Just residential.
...multifamily or residential, right?
Correct.
Okay, okay, so that...
And then we can take care of the downtown-specific
Yeah, after that.
After that.
Okay. Okay, so, cast your votes on that first one.
I have a question.
Okay, never mind. Councilmember Aguilera.
I'm not clear on that.
Excuse me, I, I believe the two motions are inconsistent, and you, you certainly can take the first, but I, I'm, they're mutually inconsistent motions.
Oh, absolutely, I will draw my motion and, and offer it after the floor is clear. But I'd like to speak to the motion that's on the floor right now.
Oh, you do, okay, Councilmember...
I can still, yeah, I'm still on.
Still on.
Aguilera first?
Yeah.
Go.
I, I think I need some clarification here. We're, we're talking about 2.33 for studio, 2.33 for one-bedroom, 2.5 for two-bedroom, three for three-bedroom for residential, not mixed-use.
Correct.
Okay.
The mixed-use zone, though, would have to have its own parking study to support a lower standard. We're not talking about a, a separate lower standard for mixed-use projects, all we're talking about is a separate lower standard for the North Santa Fe corridor. That's all I've heard so far.
Okay.
And they'd have to prove up wanting a reduction.
Correct.
Correct. And that would give us an opportunity to visit and discuss each of the projects on parking, so that it's not a blanket policy, so that we can capture issues before they become issues.
But your point is correct.
Deputy Mayor?
It would change it on the North Santa Fe corridor, and if you really want to see development occur in the North Santa Fe corridor, you may want to consider a different standard for parking, because you're probably, based on the lot size and the uses out there, not going to see much development with that high of a parking standard.
Deputy Mayor, your turn again.
I, I apologize, I'm actually confused as to the motion, I, I don't, I don't, could you restate it? I honestly don't understand it.
My motion was to accept staff's recommendation on the citywide parking standards.
Oh, there wasn't a caveat? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought there was a ca, I was just becoming to understand there was a caveat.
Because after...
But it's just as, as recommendation, I got it. I apologize.
Which includes all residential, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I see.
Right.
Um, as much as it's tempting, and, you know, I, and I know that there are citizens that came here tonight that probably would support that, but I, I know that there's no one that I could take to that neighborhood and show them the condition of those neighborhoods, who would then, after having seen the condition of those areas, who would then say, yeah, if they're not gonna build a Monarch here or an Alexan here, I don't want it. Because they're never gonna build that there. It's just not ever gonna happen, and...
Are you talking about North Santa Fe again?
Yeah.
Let's, let's get through the first motion, which is on all residential, and then we're gonna talk about North Santa Fe, right?
Yes.
Separately, we're gonna talk about that separately.
Oh, that, that was the caveat I was, so it was a caveat.
Well, we're, we've decided we're gonna have that discussion about North Santa Fe separately.
Okay.
But it wasn't a caveat to my motion.
Okay, so, okay, so, no, it, it, but it's not, it's not gonna affect the, I'm...
The North Santa Fe, this is...
Okay, all right. I, I don't know how we're gonna do that exactly.
Well, let's talk about that next, let's get through this one, and then we'll...
But I'm going back and forth between being in 100% agreement and 100% disagreement.
It's gonna affect it temporarily for about five minutes, until we have our discussion.
All right, all right.
You're right, you're right, I was, I had the same confusion.
All right, I'll bite for, for five minutes. Okay, all right.
Okay, so let's get through this one, so let's cast your votes for the, that, and then we'll go on to the next. Okay, that one passes unanimously. Now we can talk about North Santa Fe. John. Aguilera.
I make a motion that the North Santa Fe area, south of Stater Brothers' property, on the corner of North Santa Fe and Beau Beer, to Vista Village Drive be turned into what we would consider the downtown-specific plan with the change in parking for the one-bedroom to one-and-a-half bath, or one-and-a-half parking, sorry.
Yes.
So for clarification, you're recommending the downtown-specific plan parking requirements in that area with the exception of a one-and-a-half spaces for a one-bedroom?
Right.
Instead of a 1.25 that's shown.
I second that beautiful motion.
Okay, thank you.
So are we, we're, we're creating a, an MU2, correct?
It would just be a different parking standard within the MU zone for that corridor.
Which would be an, an, an additional mixed-use zone. Can we call it MU2?
Sure, you can call it that for the purposes of tonight, but yes, it would...
Because now we got two animals that are, one has a tail and one doesn't.
Correct.
And, yeah.
How about a MU?
How about a MUA?
You want a MUA?
Yeah.
Let's call it North Santa Fe. Right.
When we come back, we'll call it something...
Yeah, how about we, how about we let staff propose what to call it, but we're gonna...
It's fine.
So, so to clarify your motion, you're proposing creating a new zone that is identical in every regard to the mixed-use zone, with the sole exception that the parking standards should be identical to those in the downtown-specific plan?
The exception of one-bedroom.
The exception of the one-bedroom.
Which is gonna be 1.5.
It's the same number.
You know what? Would you be willing to modify your motion to just make it exactly the same as the downtown specific plan? That would...
Our attorney must, our attorney must say something.
I, I would just say that it would simply be an overlay zone, so the overlay zone would simply relax or adopt a different parking standard for that corridor, so it's the same zoning...
So the motion is to create an overlay zone?
Yeah, just to adjust the parking.
What, what I'm asking is, because investment and incentive is so important here, and that's what we really want, could we just adopt the downtown-specific plan parking requirements exactly as they appear here?
Originally, that's what I wanted, yes, so I would support that, yes.
I, I, if, if it's possible, I would like to support, if you would, if you would mod, if you're the maker of the motion?
Yep.
I'd, I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, I can support that, yes.
So now we're back to the 1.25, 1.25?
Yep.
The exact same as the DSP for the Santa Fe incentive
North Santa Fe.
Overlay zone, the North Santa Fe, the North Santa Fe incentive overlay zone.
Okay, so I have all you guys lined up to speak. Deputy, Aguilera, no. Franklin, anymore?
Nope.
Rigby?
I, I was just looking at that, and I was, the original motion had changing one-bedroom from 1.25 to 1.0, I mean, 1 point, from 1.25 to 1.5. I think that was your original, increasing it by half, or a quarter, that was in your original motion?
Well...
And, and, and then agreeing to reduce it. Now, I know that Santa Fe corridor is a little bit different than some of the other corridors that we have, so my question is, why the specific increase and then the... So my question is, why the specific increase and then the agreement to reduce it again?
I was going ahead and trying to be agreeable with Councilman Franklin because he, he went through all that work to, to, to increase the one, or actually reduce three others to come back to the same, same thing, basically. So, my original idea that I stated was to convert that to the downtown specific plan for parking. That was my original. And then Councilman Franklin came back and suggested that we increase, and I was just hoping to get some support and vote, so-
If I could take a swing at why, in answering your question, is because this is a place where I want the families that live in that part of our community to have a shot at, you know, so we're, we're adding half a rock into the knapsack of developers in one way, and we can remove it in the other area. I want the people that live in that part of our community to have a fair shot at their community improving, and I genuinely feel that we need to make it possible to attract investment. And I, I really feel like that's, like I'm, I, I care deeply about that because I really feel like, if we, if, I really feel like if we don't make it attractive, we're not going to get the investment there, and those families that live there, and the kids that are growing up there are going to have to live with blight their entire lives, and I don't want to see that. I want to see us have something in, on the North Santa Fe that we can be just as proud of as we are in what we're doing in downtown.
I appreciate that because I, I feel the same way for the community. I just see a, a one bedroom with 1.25 bedrooms. A one bedroom, you have a married couple with two cars, and already you're underparked. So I would still like to go back to Councilman Aguilera's original motion, which was to overlay this corridor with the downtown specific plan extending that, but with the increase by a quarter parking space up to 1.5.
For one bedroom?
For a one bedroom. And that would be the only change I would make to the parking, is adding, instead of 1.25, make it 1.5.
I agree, and the only, my, my, my only hesitation is I don't want to happen, what's over on Breeze Hill, to happen there on North Santa Fe. If, if they don't have enough parking, then it starts being in the street and, you know, so that, that worries, but I, I want it, I want the lower because I want, I mean, I agree with you on the, 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 but, yeah.
We, I'm sorry, my last thought was, I appreciate, we want to bring people in, we want to bring developers in, we want to bring commercial in, but if we, if we have the same problem, we're still, we're just creating the same problem someplace else, and it turns into a not very nice place that people want to live in or stay in or move into because there's not adequate parking for them or their families or whatever. And I think a quarter of a parking space, I, I think that is doable, a quarter of a parking space. We want to make it livable.
The, they're, they're getting $2,200 a month for the apartments on Breeze Hill, some more. You know, the average home price in, in the Breeze Hill area, I mean, these, these kind of prices are never going to be achieved on North Santa Fe. And we're, we're talking right now specifically about North Santa Fe. I mean, we're talking about creating an overlay just for that area that really needs the investment. You know, I, I just can't imagine that we're going to have something as nice as the Breeze Hill development that's going to be built there. That's, I mean, I just don't think that that's realistic, and I think when we get to the very next step in this conversation tonight, I think, I think that there's consensus to ask developers to build more amenities. So we're going to ask, and, and I would support that even in North Santa Fe, because I think that that's important. So we're going to add another disincentive to build in the next part of this conversation. And for that reason, I think, I, I think it's important that we, that we not do more than we really need to do in that zone with the parking, because the reality is, you know, we've got to create, we've got to create the opportunity and the incentive for folks to build something there, and I, I think we can still, I think it can still be quality, and I know that the parking, that the parking's going to be a struggle, you know, but I, I'm, I'm, I am, I don't want to, I don't want to drive down that street in 30 years from now and regret that I could have done something more to help improve its condition and improve the condition of that part of our community, and that I didn't, and that's honestly my motivation. I really, I, I want to drive through it 20 years from now, and I want to see something that looks great, that, you know, families are proud to live there and, and there's thriving businesses, and I, that's my, that's my hope for that area.
Councilmember Aguilera.
I would, I would agree with that, and, you know, the, the idea of 1.25 for a one bedroom is really not a far stretch, because I drive, I live up in that area. I grew up not far from, well, just, just off of Indian Rock, which is part of this People walk. People don't have cars there. I mean, when school lets out, those kids aren't jumping in their cars and going home. They're walking. And they walk through a empty lot, big empty lot, where drug deals go down, allegedly prostitution happens, or who knows what else goes on there. Today, I drove by, the walls on Stater Brothers and CBS were covered in graffiti with words I can't repeat up here. And there's no reason kids have to go through that every day, see that. So whatever we can do to create some economic benefit to this part of town, I think, is important. And I think that whatever incentives we can give to people, developers, to invest in that area, I support.
Okay, so seeing no more speakers, I would call for the question. And wait, what is the question? Where are we? Which, which motion do we have going on? Is it, is it 1.25, 1.25?
The motion was to just, to do an overlay on parking, the downtown specific plan parking limits on North Santa Fe.
So just like it's, we read on the, on this thing here?
That's right.
Okay. Councilmember Green, did you want to say something?
No, I was just specifying what I understood the motion to be, which was exactly that.
Okay, so cast your votes. That passes with one, one no vote. So, moving on to the next thing. The next thing will be building heights. So, who would like to go for some building heights? Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the building height, I, I appreciate that we're revisiting this and lowering the heights. You might recall, I was opposed to the increase in heights to begin with, and, so I'm going to move that we accept staff's recommendations on reducing the building heights from four to three stories in the identified zones.
Okay, any other discussion?
I move that we accept staff's recommendations in reducing the, the building height from four stories to three stories in the identified zones. I'm working off of, well, it's right here, and it was in our agenda report.
Page two of the agenda.
I'm sorry?
I said page two of the agenda.
Yes, right, right in the back.
I second your motion.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Joe seconded.
Oh, Joe seconded, okay. Well, then, I'm seeing no further discussion. Did you want to say something? No. I see no more talk-
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yeah, yeah, please.
So, does this, this specifically does not apply to, the staff recommendation does not apply to North Santa Fe?
No. Just two areas, yeah. Okay, so can we cast our votes?
Yep.
That motion casts, passes unanimously. Okay, so, and then we go next is setbacks. Councilmember Rigby, you're going to take the lead?
Sure.
Your name is still up there, maybe from last time, I'm not sure.
That's okay. The setbacks has been a huge issue for, for us and the community, especially with these residential-only developments that are in the mixed use zone. So, I would, my papers are all discombobulated up here, because I've got two sets of papers going on. But the recommendation that you have, I, I would recommend that we do the mixed use, taking staff's recommendation and making them the same as the residential. At the front residential 20, side interior 15, side street 15, rear 15, and between the buildings 10.
I'll second that.
Any other, any other discussion? Oh, Aguilera?
So, how would this affect, since we were talking about North Santa Fe, how would this affect North Santa Fe? This would-
Well, it would create a smaller building envelope for those parcels to build in. They'd have larger setbacks than they currently have.
Right now.
The setbacks they have right now are, what's shown on the left, zero. Unless there's some determination that there's setbacks along the block that they need to meet, so we look at the block in the mixed use zone typically to try to determine if there are greater setbacks that should apply, and so we've tried to push some developers in that direction, but the true setback in the zone is currently zero.
So, if somebody did want to build, say, a mixed use somewhere on North Santa Fe, what would the setback be if it was a true mixed use project?
The staff recommendation is that it would have to go through discretionary approval to request reduced setbacks, so that would be at the discretion of the commission and/or the council to determine if reduced setbacks are appropriate.
Deputy Mayor Franklin?
Yeah, I'd, I'd just like to suggest that we modify the motion so that in the North Santa Fe incentive overlay zone, that we have, that all the setbacks are exactly 10 feet in all of the different categories, just for the Santa Fe, North Santa Fe zone.
I could support that.
Councilmember Rigby?
My, my first question was going to be, to clarify that with these, as setbacks as proposed in my motion, clarification that I think Councilman Aguilera got already was that if anybody had a desire to reduce that, they'd just come and ask, and we would take it on a case basis, correct? So it's not completely just sealing that door with cement for all eternity. But in your, your question about 10 feet all the way around, I, 10, you know, we look at Avalon, and Avalon is 15 feet, and that is right up to the sidewalk, and that is an obstruction, a site obstruction for two of the driveways over there, as far, as well as other areas. So I cannot at all support 10 feet. To me, 15 feet, even in a mixed use, isn't enough of a setback. So again, I would have to say, depending on what parcel they're looking at and what side streets are coming at them, I would want to look at that on a case-by-case basis if they wanted to reduce it. I would not want to start at a lower standard. I would be willing to work our way down to a lower standard. So I, I would keep my motion as it is.
Okay, then, Councilmember Green?
I, I like the recommendation of keeping the motion as it is and them coming back as they need variances per se, and maybe as long as staff is under the direction and understanding that all of us on the council here really want to make it easy for the North Santa Fe development to occur, that in the event they come up with a great project in that area, you know, say, hey, it's, you know, we, you know what we want to accomplish in that area. But as far as the change in zoning and setbacks, I also, once again, second that same motion as is.
Councilmember Aguilera? Councilmember Aguilera?
So, Mr. Conley, when a developer looks at Vista on his map, or her map, what, what do they, do they call you and say, hey, what's that zoned? Or do they already know that thing's zoned one way or the other? I mean, don't they look at a map and say, hey, this is mixed use, that's residential, that's commercial? And then they look and clarify what mixed use parking standards are, or commercial parking standards are? If we label this a certain way, wouldn't we be turning away developers?
I think at first blush, you could do that, but most people that are pretty serious about developing a site are going to do some initial research and then come in and meet with the staff. That's almost always the first step they take to determine what kind of issues they're going to face in developing the site, and so we will go through that whole process with them typically before they submit an application.
So my concern is that they don't come and speak to John Conley-
It's possible.
And they come to speak to John Doe, our new guy, who we just hired last week, let's say. And I know this has happened.
Sure.
And it happens all the time, because, I mean, it's a people business, and he looks at it and says, nope, this is residential, you know, and, and that guy goes away. Hopefully, he comes to one of us and says, hey, is there something we can do here? And then we call up Mr. Conley, and Mr. Conley straightens the guy out, and next thing you know, the guy's coming before a planning commission for a rezone. But that's my concern if we, if we do this the way we're proposing on North Santa Fe.
My, my comment to that is, we have zoning designations throughout the community. We have a general plan that we try to live by in our community, and we are asked constantly by developers to change them. We are always looking at general plan amendments, zoning changes, et cetera. I don't think that's going to be a problem, because they're already coming to us all the time wanting to change things as if we don't have a general plan, or we, we don't have a zoning designation. So I don't think that would be much of a hindrance, and certainly, a lot of these developers are very savvy, and they're going to be watching this council meeting so that they know that they got the verbiage right. So I don't, I don't really think it's going to be too much of a problem. They're already coming, knocking at the door, asking for us to change everything for them anyways.
Deputy Mayor Franklin?
I'd just like to call for the question as the motion has been offered.
Okay, tell me the motion again, exactly what it is. If you could, please.
My motion was to accept staff's recommendation for the setbacks for front residential 20, side interior 15, side street 15, rear 15, and between the buildings at 10.
Okay, we had a second on that, did we? Okay. Everybody okay? Cast your votes. That passes with one no vote. Okay, so, next, we're just building setbacks, landscaping, moving to landscaping.
Before we move on-
Sorry.
Could I offer a motion that we have in the North Santa Fe incentive zone overlay, that we have a standard 10-foot in all directions setback? I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, do we need a discussion, or are we ready to vote? Okay, that motion passes with one no vote. Now- Now, onto landscaping. So, who wants to take that? Councilmember Rigby, you've been taking the lead. Do you want to do this one, or does somebody else want to take it?
Sure, I'll go first. Again, landscaping has been an issue in the mixed-use zone. And they need more landscaping, and they need more shielding from the street. So, I'm looking at staff report for landscaping. And... From 10% to 15% of site consisted with citywide landscape standards. So, increasing it by an additional 5%, basically, and allowing a reduction for true mixed-use projects on discretionary basis only. Again, they come to us, they give us a good reason why we should reduce it for them, and we can have that discussion. So, I would go ahead and accept staff's recommendation that we increase the required landscaping for this zone from 10% to 15%.
Okay, I'll second that. But we don't want to talk about the North Santa Fe at all. We're gonna give them a break?
Yeah, we should take it separately.
Okay, we'll take this then. Have any other discussion on it? Seeing none?
But, just to... Even with respect to North Santa Fe, again, if they want something different, they come and talk to us and show us what they want, and we can have that discussion. I still think it is better to talk about and look at these in reducing down rather than starting with a lower standard.
If I might, my response to that is, we've all met with the representatives of development firms, and this is the way that it starts. Vista is input on a spreadsheet, and our setbacks and our other incentives are listed on a spreadsheet. Properties are listed on a spreadsheet, and a bright young staffer identifies opportunities and finds a few good ones to bring to the attention of a more senior executive at the firm. When they hit the sort button, I'm concerned that we're going to be sorted out. That is my concern. And I don't think, when they're building, you know, when the junior staffers are building their spreadsheets, they're not gonna call Mr. Conley to make sure, "Hey, are you really serious about that setback?" Or, you know, or this, that. They're just gonna take our standard from our website, and they're gonna put it in their spreadsheet. And my concern is, literally, we're gonna be sorted out of developers' spreadsheets. Because they're not just looking at Vista, they're looking at, you know, they're looking at the entire state, or maybe states. I mean, this is a competition. And particularly in these zones that we want to incentivize, I want to win that competition. I want to attract that investment. I want Vista to get it to the exclusion of whatever other city is competing. And I feel like it's a competitive issue. And I want to remain highly competitive in that area, and I want to win those investments.
My comment to that is, I agree, we want to incentivize, as I said before. But every zone, every corridor, every neighborhood in Vista deserves to be built to Vista standards, to what we want to uplift the communities. And if somebody can't give us an additional tree here and there, perhaps that's not a developer that we should have in Vista, because they're not gonna develop that corridor the way it should be developed to Vista standards. So, I think increasing by 5% is not that much. And I think that that corridor, like every other corridor in Vista, deserves to be enhanced. It has to enhance the community. And if you're gonna be taking away some of the landscaping and make it more hardscape, more asphalt, more concrete, more stucco, more buildings, that's not really enhancing Vista to its fullest extent. We can have development, but we really just need it to look more aesthetically pleasing, more friendly, more neighborly, and more family-oriented. A couple of trees here and there are not gonna take away from a development.
We didn't have even 10% on the properties that we built that were low-income, right? I mean...
And they look rather industrial.
Look, I don't disagree, but, you know, we can't oppose affordable market-rate housing in places where it makes sense, where it would benefit families, where it would be the opportunity to live in a new, clean place, where it would mean that families can live closer to their work. You know, I... I want to... I'm gonna continue to try and be as true to what I have said from this dais as I can. And I'm going to... There are parts of the city that are high-value. We are in the driver's seat. We should be asking for the best, and we should never accept less than that. And then there are parts where we're not in the driver's seat, and we're really in a competitive environment. And frankly, it's been decades. Even the things that we've done have not created yet development in this zone. I mean, we've got a few things, but it's not going gangbusters. We don't, you know, we're not seeing construction equipment everywhere along North Santa Fe. I'd like to get to the point where we are getting some investment there. I'm really nervous about making it harder in that zone. And so, for that reason, what I would like to suggest is that we vote on the motion as it was offered, and then maybe consider separately, you know, keeping the 10% standard as a separate motion for the North Santa Fe zone.
Councilmember Aguilera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, one thing to always keep in mind as well is, I think your idea is a good one, Councilwoman Rigby. You know, that people can always come and ask, but time is money. And every time they come to us or the Planning Commission, that's more time on their project, and that raises prices of projects. And the developer doesn't really pay for that. It ends up being the people that buy or rent or own the eventual owners of those properties. So, I think the more delays and hurdles, basically, we put in front of these developers, the more costly the projects become. And frankly, I think Deputy Mayor Franklin makes a good point in that, you know, we might get aced out just on some junior staffer's spreadsheet because of landscaping, or parking, or, you know, all the things we're talking about. So, I think we should take it separately.
Councilmember Green?
I think they both have fantastic points, where they're, you know, we definitely want to maintain equality of life for all areas, per se. But I definitely think where we're competitive, where we're trying to get people to build, we want to be, you know, a little more, you know, a little more lax and a little more incentivized, like the overlap area that we're speaking about. So, I definitely agree that they have to be, you know, kind of voted on separately. But I... You both make extremely great points, so I think that's how we do it.
So, shall we take the first one first?
Can you repeat the motion, please? Or was that me?
It was you?
Sorry.
I think it was staff recommendations.
Staff recommendations for changing the landscape requirement on these zones from 10%, increasing it a mere 5% to 15%. And Joe had seconded?
I think I seconded it.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Okay.
Motion passes unanimously, so on to the next one. Deputy Mayor Franklin?
Could I make a motion that we have a 10% landscape requirement in the North Santa Fe incentive overlay zone?
Councilmember Rigby?
I just wanted to make a comment to something that you said in your last set of comments. Every part of the, as I said, every part of the city deserves to have something built to a standard and built so that it is aesthetically pleasing and homey. And I just have to say, I disagree with your comment that we're not in the driver's seat on this corridor, because not being in the driver's seat and lowering our standards and being more lax with our standards is what got us here in the first place, because previous councils reduced the standard, made more lax requirements, and we ended up with things that have become detrimental and having a negative impact in our community. So, we're having this conversation again for that very reason. So, I think we should really take pause before we do that. And if somebody is doing due diligence, and we know for a fact that these developers that come here, they know what I have said in my comments regarding other projects, or what you have said, or anyone else has said. If they're serious about wanting to do business in Vista, they have done their homework on the rules in Vista and on the city council and what has been said, and who wants what. I know when I have meetings with developers, they can sit in these rooms, and they can quote what I said on the dais a year before to me verbatim. So, I know that they do pay attention, and it's not difficult for them to come and say, "Hey, we know you have a 15% requirement for landscaping, but let me tell you why I think we should only come down to 11% or 12% or 10%." And we can have that discussion. But to say that we, as the city council, are not in the driver's seat for our city, I think that's a dangerous thought process. And leaving it to, "Let's just lower the standard and hope to God somebody comes in and saves the day for us," I think that's not a place that we want to go. So, I am not in support of reducing any of the corridor to 10%. Because I think we are still in the driver's seat in our city.
Councilmember Aguilera?
Well, I think, I don't want to speak for Councilman Franklin. I see he's on the queue anyhow. But I don't think he's saying we've relinquished all control of the city. I think what we're talking about is an incentive to get people to invest in our city. And if you drive up and down North Santa Fe, people have chosen not to do that. And we have a lot of blight in that part of town. The things that stand out as you drive up and down that street are a couple liquor stores, check-cashing places, car wash, empty lots, and virtually zero landscape right now. So, I mean, anything added to that part of town right now would be an improvement. I think that anything we can do to incentivize these developers to take a look at that part of town is a good thing. And for that, I'll go ahead and second the motion.
Deputy Mayor?
And I would just say that there are lots on this corridor that if somebody were to landscape along a sidewalk and build a curb and gutter and a sidewalk and landscape along the sidewalk, it would be such a vast improvement over what's there now with the dirt path that, you know, thousands of schoolchildren have trodden down. We all want the exact same thing. We all want a beautiful community. The reality is, we're dealing with something right now that however it got there, and I'm not even sure it's a productive conversation how it got there, it got there. We're dealing with it. We all want something better for those members of our community, even if we disagree about the exact right way to get there. I know we all want that. I mean, I don't question that for a second. We all want to see great quality, you know, housing for our families. I just earnestly believe, and it's not, you know, there's no personality involved, and I just earnestly believe that we need the incentives, because we are not yet seeing the interest from the development community in that corridor. And so, you know, again, I just, all of our hearts are in the right place on this. I think we just have an earnest difference of opinion about what the right way to achieve a better standard for our community is. So, with that, if there's no more discussion, I would call for the question.
That motion passes four to one. Okay, and next thing on our agenda are design guidelines. And we're talking about amenities here. So...
I'd like to make a motion that we accept staff recommendations.
Okay. Seeing no discussion down there, cast your votes. That motion passed 5-0 unanimously. Maybe we should have not discussed anything, and everything would have passed 5-0. Okay, so with that, that is the end of our... Yeah, the end of our discussion items. So, the next thing is oral communications. I have two people, if they... Only one. Dana Roberts. Sorry you had to wait so long, Dana.
You guys do a good job of clearing out a room. Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Dana Roberts, and I'm a volunteer with the Trauma Intervention Program, better known as TIP. Imagine, if you will, your daughter who lives out of state calls to tell you your grandbaby died of sudden infant death syndrome last night. She is just sobbing, doesn't understand what's going on, and is all alone. You know it's going to take hours to get to her. The fire department is there trying to resuscitate the baby, and the police are there doing an investigation. But who's there for your daughter? Who can be there to calm her, give her a shoulder to cry on, explain the process and what is going on? Who is the liaison between her and the first responders? A TIP volunteer is that person. We arrive on scene within 20 to 30 minutes. We are called to be there to give emotional and practical support to families that are left on the scene of any traumatic event. We are there just for your daughter. We will help explain what the officials are doing and answer any questions or concerns. We are there to help her make calls, remind her to pick up other children, to make sure she's not re-injured by not having the correct information about what is going on, to make sure she knows she is not alone. We will stay until family and/or friends can come and be with her. I am here tonight to let you know we are going out in the community and doing these very things, and helping our citizens. We are also helping to free up the deputies and firefighters to get back into service. We are regular citizens, helping citizens in crisis. In 2016, TIP San Diego responded to 1,050 calls for service, helped 4,896 citizens, and provided over 95,000 hours of volunteer service. We have an upcoming TIP Training Academy in Carlsbad from February 8th to the 18th. You can find more information at tipsandiego.org. That's T-I-P-san-diego.org. And the reason I'm here tonight is to personally tell you all thank you very much for allowing TIP the opportunity to serve the city of Vista.
Well, thank you for what you do. We appreciate you, so thank you. J.C. Winn?
Hello, Madam Mayor and council. J.C. Winn, advocate for the kids of the city of Vista. I liked the conversation tonight concerning my North Santa Fe corridor, because that's where I grew up since 1959. I personally remember when going past 711 and out to Kirk Richardson's house at Gohomi was pretty much dirt. I'd like to thank you for the concern and the devotion you showed to North Santa Fe tonight. I just want to remind the council that two honorable council members and your very own Fist of Santa Claus came out of that neighborhood, so... And if you really wanted to enhance the quality of life up in there, you could see my dream as to, and pray or hope, whatever, for me, that in the last six months, I've been buying one Lotto ticket every time that thing's gone, because my dream is to win the 170 tonight, buy the lot, the dirt lot on the corner of North Santa Fe and Indian Rock Road, and turn it into a giant skate park on the corner, so it's got a lot of access for the law enforcement to keep an eye on it. A giant swimming pool next to the giant skate park, so all the kids in the neighborhood can go for 50 cents a head in the summertime and have a nice place to swim. Couple basketball courts behind State of Brothers over there along the long wall. wall, some picnic tables and trees, and a nice place for people to go in that neighborhood from sunup to sundown. I also want to remind you that crime doesn't only happen in North Santa Fe. Crime happens in Shadow Ridge, crime happens in Rancho Santa Fe, crime happens everywhere. I mean, look at OxyContin, look at, it don't matter if you're a doctor or you're a homeless person on the street, it happens. So thank you for having, I just want to say thank you for having all of Vista devoted to all of Vista for all of you because you all show that Vista really means something and we all want what's best for Vista, and Vista is definitely coming up and rising. And thank you for all that.
Thank you. Val Brown.
Mayor, council. I've waited several meetings to share my thoughts about the vote on Breeze Hill. Public comment has been at the end of the meetings and they've been running very late. Sadly, the majority of you did not take the recommendation of the Planning Commission to require a full EIR for the Breeze Hill project. The Planning Commission sat through hours of public testimony, read a significant number of letters submitted and reviewed the project, and came to the conclusion that there was substantial evidence to support a fair argument that the project may have an impact on the surrounding environment. Some of you felt it was punitive, and others did not even consider our request. Most were just plain scared by the aggressive threats of lawsuits from the developer and hid behind laws a reason to approve this project. Only one council member had the courage to support the Planning Commission to conduct a full EIR. Her objections were based on objective facts about public safety. The project was approved with a four-to-one vote, Deputy Mayor in opposition. Thank you, Councilmember Rigby, for doing your homework. Clearly, this zone change should have never been granted in the first place, and the city had the power to at least put conditions on this project to reduce its impact on our neighborhood and make amends for a very bad land use decision that was approved by some of you who were on council when the general plan was approved. Here are some of the lessons that we've learned that we'd like to share with you after 18 months of going through the public process and doing everything that we could as residents to try and get a project that would at least fit in with our neighborhood. You have more power than you think. When projects don't meet the general plan or design guidelines, speak up. There's more to a project approval than checking the boxes. The general plan is the constitution of future development in our city and should be honored as such. You are the only body with the authority in Vista to make sure that these projects meet the Vista Vision 2030 and the general plan. You do have the power to put conditions on a project to make sure it meets the highest intent of the design guidelines in the general plan, and you can do so without getting sued. It's your job to uphold the general plan and do what's right for current residents of Vista. Several of you assured us that you would do everything you could to help us. Placing conditions on this project as part of the approval would have shown us that you meant what you said. If the only criteria for a project is that it checks the boxes, why do we bother to participate in the public process? Why bother going to meetings and writing letters and taking time out of our busy schedules to meet with every one of you if it's just check the boxes? Let's ask what can we do instead of saying we'll get sued. We rely on you to use your power wisely and to respond to communities' concerns. To say that in Vista if it checks all the boxes, it gets passed, does not meet the general plan, and it makes a mockery of the citizen involvement and further erodes public trust in government. Hopefully, from what we learned in this process, this type of zone change will not be granted, and this type of project will never be approved in the future of Vista. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have remarks. Now, our remarks, and I will start with Councilmember Green. Do you have any remarks tonight?
No, ma'am.
Deputy Mayor.
Well, I just want to say thank you to my colleagues on the council for a very productive meeting this evening. We got a lot of stuff done and a good cooperative spirit. You know, I have a hard time not feeling compelled to say something in response to the comments about how I voted on Breeze Hill. I believe, as your neighbor, that I took the action that ultimately, long-term, was in the best interest of you and your neighbors. I believe that. I believe, you may disagree with me, and I understand that you do, but I believe that we would have lost the larger battle had we tried to create other conditions. And I believe, in my heart of hearts, that what would have ultimately been built there would have been something that you would have been far less happy with. So in doing what I, as your neighbor and as your councilman, felt was truly the thing that was in your best interest, I am not going to win any credit, and no one's going to high-five me and congratulate me for it. I hope that I was right. I did not run for council so that I could, you know, because I had a burning desire to decide land use questions. There were important things that I feel that I've been able to do as a councilman, and we've done some good things. It's made a difference. Me serving on the council's made a difference. I am just your neighbor. I am just a citizen of this community like you are, and I still believe that, long-term, what I voted, I believe, was truly in your best interest, and I respect your right to disagree with me. But it's tough to be on this side of the dais and to feel in earnest that you did the thing that was in your neighbor's best interest and to not be able to fully communicate that. And I'm in anguish that I can't convince you of that. But you can question my logic and my reason, you can question my courage, but all I ask of you is please don't ever question my commitment to you as my neighbor because that's the only thing that I care about. And I want my neighbors, all of you in the audience, to know that I care about my neighbors. I have no other purpose to sit here on this council other than to serve for the best interests of my neighbors. It's the only thing I care about. I don't need to be on this dais or to be a councilperson or any of the other things that go along with being on this council. I don't need any of them, you know. But I just hope you understand that I did what I did out of my genuine belief that it was the right thing, even though I understand and respectfully understand that you disagree with me. I still believe it was the right thing to do. So thank you for taking the time to, you invested significantly, many of you invested significantly in the process with your time, and I appreciate that you did that. And I took the time to sit and to talk with everyone and to hear your input, and it did affect my decision, even though it didn't ultimately cause me to do the exact thing that you had asked. But, you know, I invested the time, I was thoughtful of my decision, and I did the thing that I thought was the right thing. And I hope it was the right thing, but I can't ever know for sure. You know, that's not a luxury that we have up here to know whether what we did was the right thing or not. All we can do is the thing that we honestly believe, with all the information we have, is the right thing. So that's my remarks.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you. First off, I want to say thank you to everyone who came here tonight and everyone who is still here tonight. We really appreciate your being here and your input. And to staff, as always, you do a great job, so thank you for being here. I wanted to report out that I did go to Sacramento on Friday for the League of Cities Policy Committee, and it was, my committee is the Revenue and Taxation Committee, which is the one that just makes my head explode every time I'm there because all they talk about is who has more money and how can we get it from them. And so there was a discussion, and we've had this discussion a few times over the last couple of years about the state, because we are in a deficit. California's running in the red, we're hemorrhaging money. So they want to increase sales tax across the state, and they want to also broaden the base of the sales tax because currently in California, we have sales tax on products, and they want to increase the sales tax on services. And they keep talking to us in these meetings about doing it and modeling after Florida and Texas, which are states that do not have personal income tax. So when we ask the question of our legislators who come to talk to us or the controller who comes to talk to us, we ask them, are you going to be reducing or eliminating the personal income tax in California? And they say, no. So this is something that we're going to be looking at in legislation, probably sometime in 2017 or 2018 because they continue to talk about it and did again on Friday. And it was the one that I referenced earlier tonight where a sales tax on services does not poll well, the word "tax." So they want to use the phrase "service fee." So what that does is that also, if it's a fee, there is a way, the state, because if you raise taxes, it has to be a two-third vote, but if it's a fee that you're implementing, it's a simple majority vote. So that is something that we need to keep an eye on and see if it's coming at us through the legislature. They've, the last, we've talked about it the last few years. The meeting I was at in the fall, they didn't really talk about it too much, but it was back on the agenda this time, so that's something that we should keep an eye on. And then the second one that we've been talking about and keeping an eye on is the vehicle miles travel tax, which is in addition to the gas tax, they want to increase in addition to the registration, our car registration fees went up as of January 1st. The bill SB 1, AB 1, those two are talking about increasing car registration fees again in 2017, or I'm sorry, 2018. The vehicle mile travel test, they had people who agreed to put the devices in their cars so that they could be monitored on their mileage, and people would be charged a fee based on the mileages that they traveled. And that pilot program has ended as of December, and the only thing that we were told by state staff was that it was a positive experience, and we're still waiting on the report to come out about exactly how it worked out and what the state intends to do with that information. But the intimation was that's probably something that they're going to offer statewide, and it would be in a step process so that you can opt into that program. And then eventually, as, I mean, it's Sacramento, they'll give a few people a couple of months to opt in, and then eventually they'll want everybody to do it probably. But anyway, those are the two things that were really on the agenda that we talked a lot about on Friday in the policy committee. So just to keep an eye out, Sacramento, as always, is looking to raise our taxes without looking at any spending. So that was what I did this week. Those are my comments.
Okay. Deputy Mayor, or not Deputy Mayor, Aguilera, John.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I'd just like to thank my fellow council members for supporting North Santa Fe and North Vista. I think that was important changes that we made to the recommendations, and I think it will pay off for us. I think that we are all up here for the betterment of our city. And, you know, we all think differently, obviously, you know, and have different ideas in, not just ideas, but things that are important to us. You know, for me, what's important is, you know, living here all my life in this city is getting it to the, well, I've always told people this when I first ran for city council. You know, I grew up here, just like Mr. Winn did and Mr. Green, and I've had a lot of friends, family, that moved out. They didn't want any part of Vista anymore, and that made me sad. So I wanted to change that, and that's why I'm up here. And any decision that I make is because I think it's in the best interest of the city as a whole. Sometimes those decisions aren't great for neighbors or exactly what they want, but believe me, I think all the members up here are making decisions based on what they think is right for the city and making the city better. I can only speak for myself and what I am up here for. I choose to be up here because I do want to make the city a better place for my children and for their children, hopefully someday, and all of members of our community, even the surrounding community. And I know some of those people don't think that we're doing the right things either, but I think that we're, the decisions we make that affect our neighbors are good for them too. And I think we're doing, we're trying to make the best decisions we can. So I think we've heard enough of that, at least from me. But I do have something I want to report on, and that is, I was representing, actually representing NCTD at Sand Ag on Friday. However, one of the things that came up was, I guess, some grant money that we're going to be receiving, hopefully if it gets voted on by the board, which I know you sit on that. So anyways, it's money that I believe is going to be going to our Out and About program. And there was a lot of people that missed out on that, so we have a great program. If you don't know about Out and About, it's a volunteer program. We have buses that will pick up our, you know, seniors, get them to the senior center, but also get them to their shopping needs and maybe doctor's appointments throughout North County. So it's a very good program, obviously very good, and there's only like two awardees, I think, in all of San Diego County. So happy to see that, but I'm also sorry to say that I think you're going to have to defend it.
To fight for it on Friday?
Yeah, because there's going to be a few people that were unhappy that they lost out. Unfortunately, you know, monies for those types of programs have been dwindling, whether they're coming from the federal level or the state level or even the county, there's just not that much money to go around. So programs that are very worthy causes are losing out, unfortunately. But we're very fortunate because staff did a great job in submitting, and it looks like, you know, if all goes well, we'll get the grant. So good luck.
Oh, thank you. I will fight for it on Friday, so I'm sure we'll get it. But I don't think, I, Deputy Mayor, for what you said and you, and you know what, and I've been here for 19 years, and I've always made decisions, what is best for the city. I started, when I got on this council a long time ago, I wanted my kids to come back here. I wanted my grandkids to grow up here, and I wanted them to go to college and move away. I wanted to have Vista be a nice place, having to be proud of it and say, I live in Vista and I'm, you know, going to come back here and live. And I do have my kids that live here, my grandkids and everything. I was so grateful to be here to go to their ballgames and things because they grew up here. My grandkids also have been growing up here. So, but I always make decisions for every, for what's best for the whole city, and I always try and make the best decisions for what's best for our city. I don't have any personal vendettas or any personal interests in anything. I just look at the whole city, and for 19 years, I've been fighting that fight. And I used to be downtown all the time when nobody was down there, and so finally, after 40 years, we made a difference in the downtown, and it's finally coming alive, and I'm so proud of the things that are going on here. It's taken a long time. We went through a recession, and it's taken a long time to, for our city to become active. And so I just want to say that, and for the same reasons you are, I serve up here, definitely not for the money, you guys. So anyway, with that, I have a couple of announcements here. I want to thank you to the Vista Chamber for hosting the annual State of the Community Luncheon yesterday. And so my State of the City address and a list of the city's significant 2016 accomplishments have been posted on the city's homepage at cityofvista.com. The San Diego Humane Society's Mobile Pet Clinic will be on site at the Wave Water Park's parking lot, providing affordable vaccinations and other services this Saturday, January 28th, from 10:00 a.m. until noon, so stop by and renew or purchase a new license for your pet. And the San Diego Theater Critics Circle has nominated the Moonlight Stage Productions for several awards from last summer's shows, including Outstanding Resident Musical for Titanic, which was a great show, and it's an honor to be nominated, and we look forward to the award ceremony on February 6th. And so with that, I will turn it over to my city manager.
Just one thing, I just wanted to say I had a good time with Councilman Green last week at the New Councilmember Academy, and so hopefully found it to be beneficial. And so it was a good time.
That's it?
That's, that's it.
City Attorney, nothing tonight. John Stone, welcome, John Stone, for our meeting tonight. Anything, cap, our city clerk? No? Okay, with that, we are adjourned.